So I've had the great pleasure of knowing Superintendent Cole for more than probably thirty-five years. I first met him when he was working with the Young Leaders Academy, working with inner-city kids and giving them educational excellence for a long time. So we're very fortunate in this parish to have a man who has that level of passion for the children of East Baton Rouge. I stand before you today a proud product of East Baton Rouge Parish School System. I've been in this community all my life, from Mayfair to Kennelworth to Baton Rouge High, and so I take great pleasure in assisting when asked. Superintendent called me and said, "Perry, can we do an icebreaker, an opening session that talks about communications? That talks about heightening the level of communication amongst board members, heightening and improving the level of communication among staff and the C-suite?" I said, "Sure, no problem." We produce trainings across the country. This is our home base here at 250 South Foster, and I will take the next twenty minutes in attempt to accomplish what he has asked me to do. It's what we're passionate about here, and for the last twenty years we've been producing communication strategies and trainings for nonprofits, full-profits, governmental entities to really just talk about for a moment, and he's only given me a moment, so I'll be very brief. Normally people give me eight hours to do this. I've got twenty minutes. What's important at the end of the day? What's important when you say the word "effective communication"? At the end of the day, effective communication is speaking with someone and they can retell that story factually to someone else without missing the intent, without missing the purpose, without missing the facts. So it takes some training to do that every day. It takes some training to be an effective communicator. Know your audience, know your facts, and know the receiver of the information. And so how do we increase our effectiveness at effective communication? And after you speak with someone, be it an audience or an individual, can they reshare the information that you gave to them accurately? That's the key to effective communication. All right, and if I can change the slide, I would be effectively... Okay. Yeah, if you can advance the slide. All right, it looked like it did it all at once. All right, so maybe we won't have a... Okay. So communications is a core competency that, when properly executed, connects every member of a team to a common set of strategies, goals, and actions. Unless these components are effectively shared by project leads and understood by stakeholders, project outcomes are jeopardized and budgets incur unnecessary risk. Outcomes incur unnecessary risk if we don't effectively communicate. That's what's so important. You all are making decisions about the children of this parish, right? So your words matter. Your communications matter amongst one another and with your constituents, with the kids, the parents, everyone, also to the staff. Your words matter, right? Because collectively, you are the governing body for this organization. I'm going to go over seven of Forbes' tactics to improve interpersonal communication. Any effective communication can occur when individuals talk to the wrong receiver. Sometimes we select the wrong person to tell a story to. That's the first thing that we need to go against. When we need to communicate, have we selected the right person to receive that information? There we go. You're clicking, or I'm clicking? You're clicking. I'm on number one. Any effective communication often occurs when individuals talk to the wrong receiver or share information in the wrong setting. So make sure the communication purpose is clear. Also choose the most appropriate communication method. Some people like face-to-face communication. Some people don't mind a text message. Some people would rather an email. Those people who want that face-to-face, they may want to talk to you in the morning and not in the middle of the day when they're working. Some of you have day jobs, right? And so maybe you don't want to talk school board business until 5:00 PM when you get off. Each of you are unique, and so the person that needs to reach out to you needs to first understand when does Mr. Cliff receive information best. And I'm going to maybe send him a little note to say, "Can I speak to you after 5:00 PM?" Right? And this, everything I'm talking about goes to everybody in this room and everybody who hears us on this live stream. Know your audience. Know how that audience likes to receive information, and that receiver will then have a high respect for what you're trying to tell them because they know that you have tuned into their needs. You have tuned into their unique qualities. So, and when you're talking about something very serious, face-to-face if you can, if it's feasible, face-to-face. And in this moment in time in the world, putting some things in writing you shouldn't do anyway, right? So prioritize two-way communication, number two. Prioritize two-way communication. Practice active listening. I am guilty of this, as everybody in this room is guilty of this. When somebody comes at you with something, you start preparing your rebuttal before you even hear what they have to say. Practice active listening. Don't prepare that rebuttal, don't prepare that sort of comeback until you hear their entire statement. When we start to do that, we're shutting down. Our body language shuts down. You getting ready for your best statement that you've ever had in your life? Practice active listening. Embrace feedback. The only way somebody's going to practice active listening is if you're willing to kind of get something back, right? That takes a little bit of thick skin. That takes a little bit of trust, and we'll talk a little bit of how do you build trust in order to feel comfortable enough to give someone feedback. But really, communication is two-way. It should never be a monologue. It should be a dialogue. And to do that, you really have to put yourself in a space of trust, first of all. Secondly, active listening. Listen to the person. Let them complete their statement. Let them complete their frustration. Let them complete what it is that their position is and why. Then give them back that feedback. Now that might require a little bit longer moment to have a conversation because you want to fast-forward through that conversation many of the times. Let me knock him in the face real quick so I can get this over with. Slow down, take a deep breath. That's the only way that we're going to effectively communicate. Three steps to success. Build your communication skills. Be clear. Remain courteous. Stay open-minded. To communicate effectively, be clear about your goal. Use easy-to-understand words and avoid incomplete sentences. I also tell people that all the time with text messages and emails. Always write as if somebody's going to put that on the front page of The Advocate. You know, all these little acronyms and three-letter things, I don't understand any of them, to tell you the truth, shaking my head and all these kinds of things. Try to get in the habit of writing complete sentences. Try to get in the habit of writing with fewer acronyms. Act as if, if somebody were to copy that and send it to the editor, you would be proud of what you just sent to a person. It will also increase your understanding and their understanding of what you're trying to say, and there's no reason that somebody can misinterpret something. Remain courteous. To enhance effective communication, you need to practice respectful communication and work through differences positively. Even during disagreements, try to stay polite. Avoid offensive words. Avoid offensive statements. Also watch your body language and facial expressions, and use the right tone so that you don't give off unintentional consequences. Stay open-minded. Make sure the person that you are communicating with feels comfortable with your ideas and concerns. That means you must keep considering their thoughts and attending to them respectfully, even when you're busy. I'm guilty of that. Sometimes I'm busy and I don't stop to listen to a person. I kind of make them walk with me, and I look back at that and I say, "That's not right. Just stop, Perry." Give them your moment right now so that they will understand you appreciate them, that you trust them. So all of us are guilty of these things. If you have concerns about a fellow board member or member of the staff, discuss it with them in private, in private if you can. You know, that goes a long way to that trust thing. You know, it's not always a reason to blast somebody in a public setting. Take them in private and try to understand where they're coming from. If you've got to take care of your business, take care of your business. But private negotiations, private communication solves a lot of problems that don't need to be in public. Number four, embrace the uniqueness of each board member. Tailor your methods to their style. Again, I kind of hit on this before. If you know somebody has a nine-to-five and they can't talk during that period, don't send an email and expect a reply during that moment because you're setting that communication up for failure. If you know that person gets off at five o'clock... Yeah. Shoot that flare and say, "Can we communicate?" And staff, the same thing. You kind of need to know the board intimately and kind of, "When will they reply to me? When will they talk with me? When will they get this back to me?" So that I don't expect something that truly is not realistic. Some of you prefer face-to-face. Some of you prefer texts. Some of you prefer emails. It's a lot, right? Some of you prefer smoke signals. It's a lot. You just have to kind of know the rhythm and meet that person halfway. Number five, steps to success. Make time for one-on-one interactions. That's very important. If there's a board member or a staff member that you never interact with, find a way to interact with that person. You may be pleasantly surprised that you share the same concerns, you share the same issues, you share some of the same historical perspectives. Try to find a moment, one-on-one interactions. That goes a long way to when you have to do something in a public setting that now you have a little bit more insight as to why that person feels that way, why that person thinks that way, and it's amazing how that transfers into a more respectful tone. Be intentional about relationships. Schedule one-on-one meetings, and these meetings will show the other person your sincere attempt to try to improve relationships that lead to effective communications. Number six, make time for team building. I reflect back, I used to work at Mid-City Redevelopment Alliance before I started this business twenty years ago, and I used to think back of, we used to have this thing called Fix Up Mid-City. We would paint hundreds of homes a year with volunteers, and the feedback that we would get most often from the corporations, it would start off with, "We really enjoy helping that homeowner to improve their home," and the second thing that would come back to us would be, "And I really enjoy the opportunity to get to know my staff more." It was amazing that at a Fix Up Mid-City event, the janitor was in charge of the CEO, and that transferred back to the workspace on Monday morning. All of a sudden, that janitor who did not have a name, did not have a face, had a name, had a face, had a purpose, because that team building that took place outside of the regular office space created new relationships, created new trust. And so there were so many thank-you notes that we would get back from bank CEOs that said, "Hey, that was an outstanding project for Miss so-and-so, and now I have a higher respect for some of the people who have been right underneath my nose for years." So try to find opportunities outside of board meetings so y'all can kind of let your hair down. Try to find some opportunities. You would be amazed at how that transfers back so that everything doesn't have to be tense, right? Doesn't have to be my view or no view. So become creative. Or there are icebreakers that you all can do. Or there are puzzle-solving games. Or there are fitness sessions. Or there are team lunches. Those things carry over back into the workplace, and you'll be amazed at the success you'll get out of those. Number seven, show appreciation. The little things go a long way. Effective communications and engagement among board members and staff will lead to more productive interactions and ultimately more comprehensive and more productive meetings and ultimately better outcomes for the kids of East Baton Rouge Parish. It's just the nice things. You know, for instance, you don't have to give a person a gift. You don't have to give a person a lunch. It's just when you notice that they're doing something outstanding, let them know. Let them know. That all leads to more effective interactions, more effective communications. And before I close, I just wanted you all to answer a few questions to kind of see if any of this makes sense. Next. So I've just given the board members five questions to see if, you know, we can have a little bit of a moment to think about some of the items I just discussed. You know, and I'm not going to pick these up, I'm not going to ask you for your responses, but is there a board member or staff member you would like to highlight of something that maybe recently, over the last ninety days, that they did for you or for the board or for the office? And please talk into the mics because with the live streaming, this is the only way that the individuals remotely can hear you. Kind of press it until it turns green.
So you mean highlight something positive?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to highlight my vice president, Mr. Goday, on initiating the collaboration with Rebuild Baton Rouge in assisting us with our surplus property. So that is something that needed to be addressed expeditiously, and that initiative has now taken off, and we're now going in a direction where we are addressing or will address the surplus property within our parish.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent.
Someone's going to have to help me with the young lady's name. The young lady who, the receptionist who sits out front at school board office? Oh, board member? It said staff member.
Or staff, or staff.
Or staff. See there? The young lady. Ms. Amber Thomas. She greets everybody with a smile when you come through the door. She's always got a smile on her face. She's always pleasant, and a couple days ago, I love smoothies. So there, there's one lady at Smoothie King that if there's more in the blender, she'll give it to you in a cup. So it was like almost a cup. And I left Smoothie King, went to the school board office, and handed it to her. And I said, "I hope you like smoothies." But she is the face of that whole central office when you come through the door. You will make your decision about everything that happens behind her based on how she greets you when you come through the door.
Thank you for sharing that. What lesson have you learned in the past ninety days that applies to some of the things that I just mentioned? Are there any things that you sort of witnessed similar to what you're saying?
Not even ninety days ago, less than twenty-four hours ago, I was having a conversation with a friend, and I went from zero to a hundred with him the minute he said hello. But my relationship with him goes back about twenty years. And afterwards last night, I sat down and I wrote him a text, and I apologized to him for my demeanor on the phone. I didn't do any of those things you just talked about in communicating with him.
Yes.
Nothing. So it was, yeah, less than twenty-four hours ago.
Right. Yeah, I mean, these are the simple behavioral modifications that we're talking about that will lead to enhanced relationships with your coworker, with your spouse, with your board member, and that's what we're talking about. How do we increase our intentionality to be more effective communicators, both in the workplace, especially because we're here for East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, and then these things just become happen, right? What is one thing the board must do in the next ninety days on the topic of effective communications? Is there anything that comes to mind? How can we, as a East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, improve communications practices? Any of the little tips we talked about, informal gatherings?
This is important for the board, but it's also important for the public. Good people with good intentions can have different ideas, and in today's political atmosphere and things like that, it seems that there is a quick step from a disagreement on policy to personal attack. And I think that we need to be much clearer amongst ourselves about making sure that nothing, and I'm not accusing the board of doing anything right now, but we've got to make sure that we do not fall into personal attacks when the real issue is we have a disagreement on policy. Because I believe everybody on the school board, and I believe most people in the public, have what they believe is the right goals in mind. Now, those goals and aims may be different. How to get there may be different, but that never gives cause for someone to make a personal attack. Even if, you know, I'm not running for reelection, but even when it comes to campaign ads, there have been some awful campaign ads and things that have come out, and that's not what schools are supposed to do. And that's not what schools are supposed to be about at all. And we can have differences in beliefs, we can have differences in policies, but that doesn't mean that person who believes differently from me is a bad person or has some kind of things about him. And I think that's just one thing that I would wish the public would show more respect in meetings, and I wish we would show sometimes more respect in meetings. But I think we need to raise the level of professionalism and respect and allow that even though I have all the answers, I know everybody else doesn't realize I have all the answers. Thank you.
Does anybody take objection to what was just stated?
I do. He don't have all the answers. No, that's it. No, no objection.
No one takes objection that we should not be making personal attacks, right? So that's my, that might be one of those things that we strive in private and public settings to just sort of guard against. Can we just guard against that? Because, right, there's so much business that has to be taken into effect. And the people need full participation, right? So great, thank you. What is one issue that we never get around to addressing? That maybe communications is hindering us from getting to? Is there one issue?
There we go. I think it's, you know, the board showing leadership. You know, this coming year is going to be our last year together as a board, you know, year four. I think, you know, I would challenge our board to, to make an effort to build our interpersonal relationships. And in our last year, remember that we lead from the top and we show that we're, we're committed to following our strategic plan and we have a clear vision and we're working together as a board. I think it'll only, you know, show the rest of the system, all the staff, all the community that we're a serious board and, and we're doing serious things. That's, that's really the only thing I, thank you, I thought we needed to address.
You finished?
Yeah.
Okay, you're a man of many words. I don't want to take the mic. But kind of to segue into what Mr. Goday said and Mr. Baloo, we've got to stop operating in silos, which can be transferred to thinking that I have all the answers. And I think when we do that, it will filter out into everybody in our district. We, if we operate in silos, then our principals are operating in silos, then our EDs are operating in silos. We've got to, everybody has to buy in. And, you know, when I coached and when I worked in the school system, I should tell my assistant coaches under me and my parents when they came through the door, "Check your emotions at the door." We're not in here for our benefit, we're in here for the children's benefit. So if we can just remember that we work for the families and the students of East Baton Rouge Parish Schools. I think if we could all just hold on to that idea, Mark, it would be a good year. The fourth year could be the best year. But we got to get out the silos.
Great. And I think we just answered the, the fifth question. What can I stop doing? Reducing silos, leading by example. All of those are wonderful things, right? And so my time has come. But what a way to start the morning, what a way to start the last year, Mr. Baloo. And staff. Let's transfer that back to the staff level, the executive, the C-suite level, the school level. We have a moment in time to be as great as we can, and now is that time, right? The environment is so hot. Let's be that beacon on the hill that when people say public education, it's right in East Baton Rouge Parish. So thank you for your vulnerability with me a little bit this morning. And to get us going, we're going to now move right on in with Ms. Taylor Gass, who's going to talk about the 2024-25 celebrations. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, everybody. It's tough to follow a communications expert like Perry. But as he's mentioned, I would just want to start the day talking about all of our wins from the last school year. Mr. Cole said that his hope is to restore confidence in the public school system. And I would argue that last year, we made tremendous strides towards doing that. So, let's see, does this clicker work now? Perfect. Okay, if you drove around town in Baton Rouge last year, my hope is that you saw one of our billboards. They were everywhere. And our message was just really simple. Dare to be great. It's an acknowledgement that we're not great yet, but we're working towards that greatness every single day. We met as a district leadership team after this board finalized the new strategic plan. And we said, "Just one simple question. If we are to be the greatest school system in the world, what are the things that we need to do?" And as a team, we came up with, "Our students need to be globally ready. We need to have respectful cultures, excellent environments, accountable systems, and we need to have a truly transformative K-12 experience for all of our students." That vision became our North Star, and dare to be great is the rallying cry behind it. And nobody says it better than Mr. Cole. And we knew that if we were going to have this new message in the community, that we really needed to look and act the part too. So our team has worked all year to update our brand. We have a very strong brand presence in this city. Everybody knows who EBR Schools is. But we've made just a few tweaks to our logo, just a slight refresh. When Kenny posted this on Facebook and unveiled it, he said, "It's like when you get a haircut and only your mom notices." The logo is actually different. It's very slightly different. And this next slide just shows you. Somebody also put in the comments, "Is new in the room with us." And yes, it is. It's right here. The R is a little bit longer. We've just made some very intentional changes. We've added schools underneath, so there's no question of who we're talking about. And if you'll see our little friend in the corner, this is Amber. He is our new district mascot. And he's just a symbol of a spark. He's daring us to, to draw that spark of greatness, of curiosity, of ideas. And more than that, he's just a friendly, family-friendly face for the community to interact with on our website. As Tanya will tell you later about Let's Talk, we just want our families to have the world's greatest customer service experience when they're interacting with us. And if I've heard Mr. Lewis say it once, I've heard him say it 100 times, we have got to tell our own story. And so through all of this work, through Mr. Cole's vision, through the strategic plan, we have truly started to see a shift in public perception. And Charles, thank you for that as well. Perry Robinson, who's now at WAFB, actually texted me yesterday and he said, "Are y'all still there? It's been eerily quiet at EBR Schools." And that's exactly how we want to keep it, positive news only. And so now if we get into our wins, our achievements from this past school year, this is our blueprint for greatness that you all set out. It's student achievement, it's employee development, and it's operational excellence. So diving into student achievement, I'm not going to sit here and read all of these milestones to you, we'd be here all day. But some of the things that we're most excited about, the new foundational learning centers at Marydale and Melrose. If you've had a chance to go out there, it is so energizing and inspiring to see those kids and the focus instruction, the two-to-one ratio in some of those classrooms, and just knowing that our most vulnerable learners are with certified teachers and the progress is really happening. We can't wait to see what that data is going to look like in the future. And also, we've been able to add so many new programs to schools who didn't have specialty programs in the past. So making our campuses more attractive and more exciting for our families. Thank you, Amy. And of course, all the work around truancy. I've been a part of a couple of conversations with Mr. Cole and some experts in the area, Ronnie Morris and Bessie. There is so much conversation around how we impact this national issue. And I think what's exciting to see is that we're implementing new things, we're implementing new protocols in our schools, how we're tracking our attendance. But it's more than that. It's about making our students want to be in classrooms. And through the things that we're doing with the $40 million bond and all of the K-12 experience items that we hope to give our students, we really hope to see that this is going to be an issue that works itself out, especially with the adjustment in our school start times. And then also thanks to the work of Stacy and Tiffany, we've seen so many expanded mental health services, which we know is so important in our schools. And also, knock on wood if you have wood in front of you, we have had zero incidence of weapons on campus this year. Yeah. This board, yeah, this board made major investments in those evolved systems and we are so proud to say that it's working. And so next, employee development. We have a little video for you just to thank you for approving the stipend this year. So that's exciting to see, the stipend in action at our schools. And as we continue to talk about greatness and excellence, we have some of the best people in the country right here in our school system. We had Kyle Fontanet, who was runner-up for Principal of the Year this year. And then our very own Andrew Okansky, who won the National Cognia Award. And I believe Suzanne Navo on your team has raised almost over $2 million this year in grants. So we're really doing some exciting things. You'll hear much more about employee development and our staffing and all the great work that the academics team is doing. But moving forward into operational excellence, school realignment. I'm sure we're all sick of hearing that word now, but it was so tremendous to see the work that this staff did over the summertime. If you were in our office, the only thing team was talking about was facilities, technology. How are we going to make sure our families know what time they need to be at school? There were so many moving parts that went into making realignment successful. Terrica Jamison over here spearheaded so much of that work. I mean, Casey Gilbert, we could not have done it without those two. It was tremendous. And not to mention, we can't do any of this work without engagement from our community. So Marlon Cousin, the community engagement team, they still run our parent, our student, our teacher advisory groups, the principal advisory groups. They've been extremely helpful. We get to talk to them about these issues in real time. "What are you feeling for next year? Are you wanting to be a part of school start time?" So we're having these conversations every single day. And then Let's Talk, which I believe Ms. Griffin will talk to you about later. It has been incredible to see, once just giving someone the, the opportunity to communicate with us, to have that two-way dialogue in real time. Team at Central Office was streamlining transportation issues as we returned to school this year. And so we're able to see our issues getting resolved. How quickly are we resolving those issues? We also know that Mr. McCann and the transportation team, they were able to reduce some ride and some transfer spots. Every single day, we're working towards optimizing transportation. We know we have some work to do there. But a lot was done, including during a time when we were still facing a bit of a driver shortage. So we're really proud of everything that we've accomplished this year in our operations. And of course, the visitor management systems are beginning to roll out now. So I believe we already have 20 installed, if Mr. McCann is here. But we're working towards full implementation. Yes, sir.
In real, we talk about real time. In real time, right now, Mr. Casey Gilbert had an incident at WHAM. And at 8 o'clock this morning, actually about 7:45, Mr. Gilbert was on the job. He's doing a great job. And people like Hess that I've been critical of a few times, okay, more than a few. They stepped up their game. So you're talking about facilities excellence, Mr. Gilbert deserves another round of applause.
Casey, are we good? Are we G2G? G2G? Double-click, double-click on that. Okay, great. But we don't want you to just take our word for it. This is not the propaganda machine at work. This work is really happening every day. We have a little bit of a testimonial to show you guys from Glen Oaks about the school start times and how that's running this year.
I would feel sleepy or not energized. And then now, unless Tyree, y'all get better sleep and like feel more energized.
I was nervous about the time. Now that school has started, I've noticed that the students are a little bit more engaged. They're not sleeping, they are wide awake. And so I believe that maybe two hours has literally helped them with their sleep habits.
Some kids are, you know, as you're paying attention, like want to get involved. We're always complaining that we don't get enough sleep during the day. But that extra hour and like when we're done, it really helps us stay awake and prepared.
I asked my students, "Do they like the start time?" And if they're not, they're saying, you know, "To embrace the change." Because it's literally all about them being, making sure that they're attentive, that they're prepared and that they're not missing what they're supposed to have because of sleep deprivation.
These changes were not about thoughts. We made these adjustments for our students to put them in a better position. Overall, vision for student success is for them to get a high-quality K-12 education so they can make choices when they leave the K-12 experience. This change is going to help us accomplish our goals, which is to ensure our students are comfortable, safe and feel like they can pursue their dream goals in a way that's going to put them on a path to a bright future.
So as you can see, Dare to be Great isn't just our slogan. It really has become our standard here at EBR Schools. So we just want to thank you all for your leadership and your trust and your partnership as we keep doing this work. And greatness lives right here in EBR Schools. So thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. And all of what she shared on the slide is in your binder. So if there are specific areas you'd like to discuss, oftentimes there's so much work happening behind the scenes, so much work folks in this room are doing every single day. And we're really, really proud of the progress we've made. And so I would love for us to give this team who are in the room another round of applause for their efforts. They work really, really hard. Extremely hard. So I'm very, very blessed to be able to work with a group of people who don't mind working. They, they don't, they don't mind working. So I try not to bother them late at night, but many of them bother me late at night and, and early in the morning because they're that dedicated to the work. So testament to when we have good people, good things can happen. And I think we have great people on our team. So thank you for that presentation, Taylor. Sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you again, Taylor. Let's give Taylor and her crew a big round of applause. At this time, we're going to get into the meat and potatoes of today's training board roles and responsibilities. roles and responsibilities. With Hammond and Seals, we're going to be represented by Mr. John Geis.
Thank you, sir.
John.
Folks, John Geis here. It's nice to be down and to see you again. I rarely get to come to some of your board meetings, but when I do, I enjoy it. I'm also joined by my partner, Al Perkins, in the back. Al is in our Baton Rouge office, and I know you know him more, very familiar with him. So look, state law says that you, as board members, have to get training in various topics every year. But that's not what we're really here for today. We'll call it training. What I want to visit with you about is what is our role as a board member and equally, what is not our role? I have never taught school a day in my life, but everyone in my family has. I have a daughter that's a teacher. Father was on the Bessie Board, was a superintendent. A brother's superintendent. A grandfather, a superintendent. Grandparents that were bus drivers. And so the world that they serve the public in and the world that you serve today is extremely different. I think back of the greatest teachers I had and what made them so great. I remember diagramming sentences on the board. Who remembers diagramming a sentence on the board? Those teachers that I thought were great and use those diagrams would likely be ineffective today under our current situation. It's kind of sad, but I know life changes. But as it relates to us as a board and as the staff of the school district, we have to realize that things have changed as well as far as governance. I started practicing law when I was skinny and I had hair. And when I went to school board meetings, the board hired every single employee. Can you imagine going to a school board meeting where they said, "The next item on the agenda is to hire a custodian at such and such school"? And board members would make, the superintendent would make a recommendation, the board members would say, "I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation." They would vote it down. And they would say, "Mr. Superintendent, do you have another recommendation?" And we would be there until someone was hired. Every fire was done that way. Every transfer, everything was done by the board. So the goal today is to realize that those things have changed. And when Act One came into effect in 2012, it just totally changed your roles and responsibilities. And it said after January, or excuse me, July 1, 2012, our role is to be a policymaker. Our role is not to run the schools. We hire the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and this staff to implement and to run the school based on the policies that you set. And so I know that the board and staff is here, but I know that in TV land and represented by the press in the back, we have the public. And I think it's important for them to understand that when they go to the poll, they are electing people to enact policies for them. They are not electing people to call and to give directions to, "I want this principal fired. I want this teacher removed." That is no longer the role. Now, it was prior to 2012, but not since Act One. Act One says, "We, as a board, enact policies." So I urge you to get active in your policymaking role. And don't just adopt a policy because it's in front of you. Read that policy. If it's setting something that you can't live up to as a board, that you either don't have the means of doing it or philosophically you disagree with it, if it's one of those areas where you have some discretion, by all means, change it. And you periodically need to look at your policies because every school district in this state has one on volunteers, and it talks about volunteer programs and all. And that's something that few districts have gotten around to fully implement. All right. So let's start with, what do you do when you get that call from a parent? I can tell you this, the one thing you never tell a constituent or a parent is, "I'll take care of it." Because you've just allowed your mouth to overload another part of your body. You see, you are one of nine people, and it takes the vote of five people in order to get something done. So what we tell our constituents, let's see, is that, "Have you, you got a problem with the teacher? Have you talked with that teacher? You have? Have you talked with the principal? Well, if you haven't talked with him, I recommend that you reach out to the administration." We respect that chain of command. Because, look, you have hired Superintendent Cole, and Superintendent Cole has hired principals. And we may not necessarily like everybody that works in this district, but we must respect them and the authority, and we need to give them an opportunity to work through the problems that we're having. Now, this is something that is pretty incredible. And I have realized that every school district in the state has this, but I bet you few people realize it. The red's a little hard to read, but whenever a complaint is made to the board or a board member individually, it is supposed to be referred back to the lower levels for review. But look at this last sentence. "The school board will consider hearing citizen complaints when they cannot be resolved by the administration." And in fact, the very last sentence is, "The board shall not consider or act on any complaint that has not gone through that administrative level." So folks, this is something that you need to know. You need to know, and you need to be able to tell your constituents that, "Look, we have a procedure. And the procedure is that we give our administration the opportunity to resolve problems without getting on that board floor." Now, this is your policy. This is something that you have passed and said, "This is our Bible. This is what we're going to follow." So we need to be aware of that. All right, let me just flip to the next one. May have to flip it for me. All right. Here's another thing. I know that we get calls about employees, you know, what, you know, how do they hire this person? How this person's hired? I just want to touch very, very briefly on what process we go through when we hire someone. When someone comes to a school, they're interviewed at the school level, references are checked, but ultimately, a fingerprint is taken and a background check is done. And if that person who is applying has any conviction, guilty plea, or anything relative to a sex offense, a drug offense, or a crime of violence, we cannot hire them. Even if that person was pardoned, if the offense was expunged, none of that will resurrect their ability to be employed. They can't be employed. But just recently, this year, they added another layer to that with Act 409. And now we run them through the Department of Children and Family Services. And that if they have been reported and put on a list as someone who is flagged as a potential problem as it relates to child abuse and things of that sort, then they're not hired. And I wanted to give you that comfort level in knowing what your staff is doing. All right. Another thing that you, as a board member, sometimes deal with is calls from employees. They want to say, "I don't want to file a grievance. I want to file a grievance." And I think it's important for us to realize what a grievance is and what a grievance is not. Now, in this district, I know your superintendent and your assistant superintendent. They are going to listen to concerns that your employees have, and they're going to have their staff do it. And those concerns can be addressed without having to go through a grievance. A grievance is a very specific and narrow term that we need to look at. So state law says that on matters over which the board has authority to address, there must be a grievance policy. So timeout, let's talk about this. What if one of our staff members over here goes to college, gets another degree, and they go to Dr. Brumley at the Department of Education and say, "I want to upgrade my teaching certificate." And Dr. Brumley's office says in certification, "Look, you missed this course. We can't upgrade that." And so the employee is offended, and they come to this school board and say, "I worked for you, and I went back to college and got this extra degree. They denied me the upgraded certificate. I'm filing a grievance with the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, and I want y'all to upgrade my certificate." Could y'all do that? No. Could the person file a legitimate grievance for that? No. Because under the law and under your grievance policy, the last step is, the board will rule on the grievance. So I want you to remember this day, the next time an employee comes to you and says, "I don't like the class I'm teaching. They transferred me to this math class. I don't like the school I've been assigned to. They reprimanded me. They gave me a poor evaluation." All of these type things are just like that teacher that wants their certificate upgraded. That is not a grievance because you, as a board, don't have the authority and personnel anymore. So we can't hear any grievance where the grievant is seeking some change on a personnel matter. Because as a board, collectively and individually, we're out of personnel. So let's think of some examples of this. A constituent calls and says, "Look, I've been recommended for termination. I want to file a grievance. I want you to get involved." Well, first of all, we know that's under Act One. You can't get involved. But we also know that under the grievance law, if it is a personnel matter, it can't form the basis of a grievance. And so a lot of people don't understand that. Now, it's very important for me to also tell you that what I'm not saying. Let's say someone comes forward and says, "I'm being harassed at school because of my age, my race, my sex." You mean to tell me I can't file a grievance on that? Yes, I am. I'm telling you, you can't file a grievance on that. But you can file a complaint, which we are obligated to investigate. We will investigate that under a different set of policies other than the grievance policy. So let me put, press pause and kind of do a recap here. Your role as a board is policymaking, not to run the district. You hire people to run the district and to implement your policies. We thoroughly vet and background check our employees. When it comes to grievances, we, as a board, are the final arbiter of grievances as long as they do not touch on personnel. If someone wants to complain about where they've been assigned or reprimanded or something, that's off limits. And for parent complaints, we refer them through the chain of command. All right. I've already hit that one. So here's the real reason we're here. We were here to talk about roles and responsibilities in governance. So when Act One and Act 570 came along, they changed 100 years of law in Louisiana. 100 years of law. And so in doing so, it changed 30 specific statutes and basically said, "We're taking school boards out of personnel and out of running the district." So here's the actual law. You hear, "What's Act One? Act One." Act One is that document I handed out to you. And it basically says, "You, as a board, are responsible for making policies." So that's the very first one, making policies. And here's another one that comes up a lot. "Can we, as a board, go look in a personnel file?" I get asked that all the time. Section K, notwithstanding the above, city and parish school board members are authorized by policy to look at all records except personnel files, evaluations, observations, complaints, and grievances. We have to stay out of those. All right. Here is another important section. P, "No board member in his individual capacity can take any action intended to interfere with, compel, or coerce a personnel decision." Now, we're going to go over some examples of this. But when I tell you, "Act One took away your role in personnel," I'm saying it based on this statute right here. You cannot intend or unintentionally try to coerce, compel, or interfere with a personnel decision. In addition, the ethics code steps in here. And what the ethics code says under abuse of office is that you, as a board member, cannot compel or coerce a public employee to do anything having an economic value. Let me explain what that means. Let's say you call a principal and you say, "Hey, I got a constituent in my district that really needs a job in so-and-so." You've just, if you coerce or compel that principal to hire that person, you've just violated this statute because the Ethics Board has determined that anything of economic value is a job. So if you try to coerce or compel someone to give a job to someone, you have violated that provision of the ethics code. All right. So here is a chart that I've put together for us. And what I've attempted to do is to take every area that a school district does, and we're going to talk about whose role it is. Day-to-day operation of the system, the board enacts a policy, your superintendent and his staff or her staff makes the actual implementation decisions. The budget, the budget comes to you on a recommendation from staff in the business department, and you, as a board, vote on approving that budget or amending it. We hold public hearings before doing so. But once the budget gets to you, it's your role to approve it. Decisions on buildings, leasing, and expansion, you make that decision. And the superintendent comes to you with recommendations. I'm asked a lot, why is it that if the superintendent runs the day-to-day affairs, why are we involved in decisions on renovations, leasing, expansion? Those are more long-term plans, which are almost akin to a policy. And the other thing is, these items really impact your budget because along with the actual construction cost come maintenance, insurance, and other things like that. So you have a role there. Actual purchasing of paperclips and supplies, that's part of your budgetary and your policy, but the superintendent implements those purchases. See if I can make it go to the next one. All right. Major repairs, you approve. Personnel evaluation, you, as a board, evaluate one person, and that is your superintendent. But you approve the personnel policies, the personnel evaluation plans. But as it comes to the actual evaluation, you evaluate the superintendent. We've already covered grievances. You pass the grievance policy, and the final appeal comes to you. Personnel policies, again, you adopt those. We've covered evaluations. The next two biggies are on student discipline. Did any of you get calls when someone's child has been suspended or expelled? Let me tell you how that works. If a child is suspended in East Baton Rouge or any other parish in this state, the parent can appeal that one time to the superintendent or his or her designated on a suspension. But after that appeal, the decision that the staff makes is final. They cannot appeal a suspension to you. And you should be grateful for that. If you had to have a school board meeting on every single suspension, heaven forbid, you would never leave the school board office. And the other thing you need to realize is suspensions are usually three to five days. And before you can even have a school board meeting, the kid's back in, back in school. Expulsions, however, are a little bit different. Those are long-term removals, and as a result, the parent can appeal to the board. And the board either affirms, reverses, or modifies. And members of the board, I rarely get to speak to you about discipline. But to me, this is one of the more serious things that we take up, and that is an appeal of an expulsion hearing. We may have one child before us asking for grace, but we're sending a message to all the other kids at that school. And so that's used, for example, the kid who shoves a teacher down or hits a kid, and that kid, I mean, hits a teacher. That kid has been recommended for expulsion. If you reverse that decision and put that child back in school, you've just sent a message to all the kids in that district that touching a teacher is something that's not going to get you in trouble. So we need to be very careful on those. Hiring and firing of teachers, the board has no role. The principal recommends, the superintendent ultimately approves after the background check. As far as administrators, you approve a contract form or the revision of that form. And then the superintendent and staff, they go through the process of hiring the principal and use that standard contract, which you have approved. Bus drivers, you have no role in hiring of bus drivers, but there is this really bizarre law out there on bus driver termination that talks about... law out there on bus driver termination that talks about three different ways to terminate. And we are probably going to see a revision in that law this legislative session. But as a general rule, when it comes to even the termination of all employees, whether it be support employees, teachers, all of them, the board is out of that. Let's get on to the next one. Salary schedules. You, as a board, adopt a salary schedule, and then the superintendent implements that salary schedule through the use of the people in the HR staff. Let me tell you how that works. Under the old way of doing things, we had a step that said, "One year of experience, X dollars. Two years of experience, X dollars." We now generally are using steps. And once you adopt a salary schedule, the superintendent and staff can go up and down that schedule as needed in order to recruit people. Up in my part of the country, up around Monroe, we have very rural parishes and one or two big ones. And those big districts generally attract all the better teachers because they come there for the higher pay, and the bigger districts have heavy recruiting efforts. And so in the rural districts, the superintendent who needs a math or a science professor, they have to use that salary schedule to slide up and down it in order to attract people. But the role of the board is to adopt that salary schedule. Reductions enforced or implemented by your superintendent following the policy which you, as a board, enact. And I really encourage everyone to take a look at that reduction enforced policy, make sure it's up to date, and it suits the needs of the district because more and more boards, unfortunately, are seeing sharp declines in enrollment. All right, so John, you mean to tell me that I can't run the district? I can't look in a personnel file? I have no authority as a board member? Is that what you're telling me? Well, I'm telling you, you can't do any of these things. You cannot go to a school and tell a principal, "Hey, you really need to paint this hallway. You need to do this. I want to come in and sit and observe a teacher." Those are things that you lack authority to do and that will get you in trouble. You cannot investigate. Let's say that you hear that money's missing. You hear that a principal's not doing a good job. You hear that there's a concern. You, as a board member, cannot investigate that. A board member may not go to an expulsion hearing with a parent. You may not go to a disciplinary hearing with a teacher. That is not your role. Now, why am I saying this? I want to show you some of your policies. First of all, I've given you a copy of 1781. But look at policy ABA in your own policy manual. The function of the board is not to operate the schools. That's not state law. That's something that we, as a board, have passed and said when we took our oath, "We're going to follow the laws of the state of Louisiana and our own policies." Here's your policy. The function of this board is not to operate schools. So ABB reminds us that, hey, a lot of times, we are a judge. We have to remain neutral. Let's say that a child is recommended for expulsion. If you've gone out and done the investigation, if you've gone to the expulsion hearing with a parent, you're going to have to recuse yourself because you're no longer an impartial member of the school board that can sit on the jury when that child and parent comes before you. ABB, that's in your policy manual. It says, "We delegate all hiring and placement. Placement is transfer and assignment." You delegate that to the superintendent. ABC, board members do not act individually to bind a board. We only have authority in that school board meeting. And GAMC, no school board member shall participate in any investigation undertaken by the school district. So what I've tried to do is to tell you what your limitations are, but not just John Geis on the law, to show you in that actual statute I passed out, and to show you this in your own policies. Now, what happens if you do it? You know, a lot of times, my kids say, "It's easier to get forgiveness than permission," okay? And some of you may have, my mom was like, "Man, that guy doesn't have a clue. He's up here talking about theory, but I want to talk to you about practicality. What can really happen if you do this?" Well, first of all, an employee can file a lawsuit against you. And in some lawsuits, the board will be able to defend you. In others, the board may not be able to. So the first thing that can happen is you can get a lawsuit. The second thing that is happening more and more is that someone will make a complaint to the Ethics Board, and the Ethics Board will come in and do an investigation. And the fine there is up to $10,000. If a member of your staff violates the ethics code, the Ethics Board even has the authority to remove them in certain circumstances. So the Ethics Board has the authority to fine. So in addition to the lawsuit and the Ethics Board, if one of you goes rogue or goes renegade, other members of the board can entertain a motion to censor you. So we could find an item on the school board agenda. Consider motion to censor John Geis for violation of such-and-such. That has happened around the state. Now, what is the benefit, what is the result of it? It doesn't remove you from office. It is just a public reprimand of you, as a board member, for some violation that you've done. And I'm telling you, folks, it is not, it is not good. Now, I want to go through some examples of this. A board member commits the board to providing a box lunch at a local economic development event. This is the one that I was personally familiar with where the board member got reprimanded. So the board member goes to the chamber and says, "Oh, don't worry. Say, you've got that big event coming up. The board will get, we've got all these cafeterias. We'll just do box lunches." One board member agreed to commit the board to that type of expenditure, a questionable expenditure at that, because our role is really not economic development. We're educators, okay? That found the board member on the agenda for a censor because we, as board members, cannot individually bind the board. Number two, a board member attends an expulsion hearing with a parent and then seeks to reduce the punishment for the student. That can result in a censor, and it also most definitely will result in you not being able to attend the meeting where the actual expulsion hearing is being taken up because you've already been involved yourself. A board member comes to a school and asks why a student didn't make the cheer squad. My brother was a principal for a long time, and he told me that there were two very important days in a principal's life. One is October the first, when we have the count. It's all the kids that we try our best to, you know, at October first count. And the second one is the day after cheerleader elections. But I know that you get calls, and I know you get, it may not be about cheerleader, but it'll be about why my kid didn't get to do this, or why my kid didn't do that. Resist the urge. Remember that policy we talked about? Refer them back, okay? If you go to the school and start asking why and urging the administration to do anything, you're crossing the line. A board member urges a principal or superintendent to hire a constituent, a friend or church member, that one will result in an Ethics Board violation. Folks, people can record you. And I have seen principals in some districts had enough. A board member keeps coming and keeps coming, keeps going, "I want to hire this. I want you to do this. I want this wall painted. I want this changed on the campus. I want this done. I want this done." And the principal ultimately records the board member and turns it over to the Ethics Board. If you try to force, compel, intimidate, persuade like that, then it's a problem, and it's going to, it's going to bite you. Here's another one. This one is a actual reported ethics decision. ABC is a company, let's just say they do custodial work for the board. You say, "Well, I heard Geis say I can't go to the school, so I'm not going to go pressure the principal. I'm going to go down to ABC, and I'm going to tell ABC, 'Hey, I've got a church member. I've got somebody that really needs a job. Now, I know that y'all got the contract with us. I voted for that contract, by the way. And so I would like you to get so-and-so a job.'" That got that board member a hefty fine. So personnel, whether it be our employees, our contractors' employees, we simply cannot use our office to try to gain a benefit for ourselves, which I know everyone knows that, but for others. If you try to get something of an economic value for another person, you're going to violate that ethics code. A board member seeks privileges, directs employees to perform tasks, that's no-no's. A board member investigates parent complaints or employee complaints, that's a no-no. I like saying it like this. A problem is never really a problem until it becomes one, okay? So you can go down there and talk to that principal about hiring somebody today, and you may think, "Well, he didn't object," you know. You go back, go down there tomorrow, "She didn't object." You go down there that third day to another principal, bam, you get an ethics complaint. So please be aware of that situation. All right, who is an effective board member? An effective board member is someone that collaborates with fellow board members. It takes five votes, folks. I had a school board in North Louisiana, seven members on the board, and one board member raised his hand and said, "Mr. President, I want to remind everybody on this board. We've got seven members, and if you give me four votes, I'll make a chicken eat pepper." So you, you have got to work. You think about it. It'll sink in in a second. You have got to work together. And folks, if you show your behind, if you seek to embarrass somebody on the board floor, if you talk down to a board member, your vote isn't any better than that next person's one vote. If you don't work together to try to build cohesion, you are not going to be effective for yourself or for your district. You must work together. An effective board member is one who tries to avoid issues in public airings of dirty laundry. I know you just mentioned that a few minutes ago. Talk to people in private. Talk to people in private. You are going to get more with that sugar than that salt and vinegar. One who attends all board meetings and committee meetings, and one who prepares, doesn't just show up. You know, teachers on the playground, we tell them all the time that just being on the present on the playground is not supervision. Folks, a couple of weeks ago, I had two teachers on the playground. They're talking to each other like this. And behind them is a little girl climbing up a slide, getting to the top and jumping, trying to jump onto the monkey bars. On the fourth time she jumped, she broke her leg. And a lawyer called me who knew me from law school and said, "John, y'all didn't have supervision on the playground." I called the superintendent in that parish. She says, "John, that's a ball-faced lie. We had two teachers on that playground." I called the lawyer back, and he said, "You're sadly," I said, "You're mistaken. We had two teachers." He said, "John, my client's mother is related to another teacher there, and they were observing from inside the class. You need to look at the video." And when we looked at the video, we realized that we did not have supervision. Supervision is presence plus engagement. Being a board member is the same way. Presence at meetings plus engagement. If you don't come to the table and offer suggestions, then you're not engaged. When we have partnership meetings, Al reminds us, anybody can complain. But do you offer a suggested change? Do you have a solution? So come to that meeting, engage, and be prepared. A prepared board member is one who calls with questions before the meeting. So who in the, who in the room helps get agendas out to board members? All right. All right. How, how long before a board meeting do we try to get those agendas out? A week? Y'all get them a week? Man, we got some, we've got some, April, how much before a meeting do you get that agenda out to them?
Try to get it to two weeks if we can.
Holy cow. I know some board members that would be dying and thinking they were in heaven if they were in this parish. One or two days is the norm. I've got a meeting Tuesday in North Louisiana on some hot topics. That agenda went out Friday, and they were elated. They got it out there. They're not just doing that to get it off their desk. Well, maybe so. But they want you to be able to call them. You know, "Hey, superintendent, I got this agenda. Item three, what's this about?" Or, "I really, we need some more information." You, as a board member, will make a better decision. It will be a shorter meeting. The result will probably be a better result if you ask those questions in advance. A good board member is one who's not seek to ambush, embarrass others, or to make him or her look better by doing so, okay? If you have a problem with someone, tell them they have a problem. Don't let problems fester. Hey, this is another example I use up in North Louisiana. I could be in front of you today with my pants unzipped and a cootie on my nose, and none of you would say anything. We hate telling people we got a problem with them. We would rather just let it roll along so we don't have to deal with it. If you have a problem with him, if you have a problem with her, talk about it. You got to talk. And, and don't do it on the board floor. Don't do it on the board floor. Folks, if you don't treat that, that problem, it is going to fester and infect the whole board, okay? So don't embarrass or ambush. One who does not promise a constituent a result, I've already covered that. But here's the one I learned at my church. Our church board goes through a training, and they told us, "Look, when we make decisions, don't make them for today. Don't make them for your kid. Make your decision for your grandkids and your great-grandchildren. What, what is this construction project that we're doing today? What's it going to look like 25 years from now? What are the demographics of our town showing? What are the needs that we have? What is the job force? Where are we heading to?" Would you, would anybody come in and put a program on typewriters, typewriter repair today? Heck, no, okay? So look down the road to what are the long-range impact of your decision. One who accepts the will or vote of the majority. Hey, you may be on the losing side of a vote, but after that vote has occurred, that is the decision of the board of which you are a member. Get behind that decision and move it forward. And I also think that whether you understand the value or not, your state association does things for you that you're not aware of. Man, when it comes time for the legislature to meet, they are there lobbying, and it's just, you can't imagine what would happen if some of these bills that are defeated gets passed. Now, I want to, to back up a second. I want to say it this way. The role of the superintendent is to make the board look good. We've, we've seen these praises, is what I call them, these achievements you have. Those are praises. That's his job, okay? Your job, though, is to make the superintendent shine and to support the decisions that you, as a board, make and that he implements. And once that gavel falls and that decision is made, fall in behind the superintendent, regardless of who it is. Today, it's Lamont. Next week, next year, we don't know what the Lord has in store. But be supportive of the board collectively once those decisions have been made. All right, before I move on, I've got a couple more slides. Any questions on any of this so far? Must not be any problems there. I mean, look, folks, we don't have enough time. Look, I'm going to lay this down. I know every district in the state has these problems. The problems are that the constituents don't understand your role. And I'm glad that the media is here today because I think responsible journalism is... is as much to educate the public as it is to follow the board. If our public could understand that as a matter of policy in this state in 2012, the legislature made a decision that boards are doing too much, and we're taking the boards out of the role of running the school district, that's what happened. And we, as a board, can understand that. But as long as the public keeps calling you, putting the pressure on you, "I want this person gone, I want this person hired," we're going to have a problem. So as much of today is, I may be preaching to the choir. You know this. But the people that put the pressure on you and think that they elected you to do things that you cannot do, that's, that's what it boils down to. And whether it's an attorney from our firm or whether it's Gwynn, it, it really puts us in a difficult role. We would like to be able to say, sure, you can do this, this, and this. But a lawyer is hired to tell you as much what you can't do as opposed to what you can and how to do it. And that's the situation there. Now, there are a couple of really important acts of the legislature that were just passed that went into effect in August. I'm going to hit a couple of those real quickly, and then I'm going to take some questions. This one is really important, and I hope you will share this in your churches and your community. It used to be that if we had a teacher that was trying to develop an intimate relationship with a student, we'd fire them. Boom, they'd be gone. That's still the rule today. But in addition to that, they can now be arrested for that. Even if nothing inappropriate has occurred, if they are grooming the child, that is now a criminal offense. So here's the next one. Act 142. We had convicted child molesters who were showing up at bus stops with candy. And it's kind of appropriate that yesterday was Halloween. But this law was passed that between the hours of 6:00 and 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 and 5:00 p.m., a person convicted of a sex offense cannot be within 500 feet of a bus stop. Adam Bass, the senator up in, in Bossier Parish, really pushed this one. If you go to trade in your computers, we try to clean up those computers. Now that's the law. We have to really clean up our computers before we trade them in. Now, if we receive a, a student from West Baton Rouge or Central or somewhere from around any parish, they've always sent us the student records with their grades and all. But now the law mandates that we get their disciplinary record. This is very important. For members of, of the public and for the press, what we would really like to see is that this law would apply to private and charter schools as well, in this sense. What this means is if a kid from Central transfers in from, to EBR, Central must send us their discipline record and their student records. If a private school, though, if we get a kid in from a private or a charter, sometimes we catch the devil trying to get those records. Because they say, "Well, that law doesn't apply to us." Well, that's, that's ridiculous. It applies because of our need to protect the safety of all kids. And so if we've got a kid that brought a gun to a private school or charter school, we darn well need to know about that. So I'd like to see that changed. Here's one on SRO officers. The last year, a law was passed that said that if a SRO officer is at a school and we have a suspected child abuse problem, we could not report that to the SRO officer. Kind of failed to understand that. This law changed that back. And so now the SRO officer can receive that report, but he has to then relay it up the chain to the sheriff and get directions from the sheriff. Kids Online Protection Act. This is something that our, our technology people needs to be aware of to change some settings on the privacy for our computers. This is the act I talked to you about. We always have done background checks, but now this requires us to check with the Department of Children and Family Services to make sure that no one is on their, on their list. Let's see. That's that same act. And that's it. Now, folks, I've covered a lot quickly. I know that this is not a high-paying job that you take for the money. And if we consider the hours you put in, just the hours alone, you, it, it's difficult. But then when we add the pressure that is placed on you, not only by constituents, but by other political bodies, by the state, the State Department of Education and all that, it sometimes is untenable. But if I could leave one impression on you today, it is this. We must work together. And I use the word "we" much broader. We, as a board, work together. We, as the board and the staff, working together. It, it should never be like it is in other parishes, that it's us against them, the board against the administration. That's something I'm not talking about here. I'm talking about in other parishes. But what causes a problem is where a principal calls the superintendent and says, "A board member came by here today and said he or she wants this done." We, we've covered a lot of stuff today to show you that that's, that's not our role. It could end up with a censor. It could end up with something at the ethics board, and, and we don't want that. That's why I entitled this "Staying Out of the Fire," okay? Thank you for what you do. Thank you for the opportunity to, to get to work with you. Surely, there is a question that you or the staff may have. If you do, I would be happy to entertain those.
Can we have copies of the, of the presentation with the amendments? Various, um, things that you were speaking of?
Yes, ma'am, let's, let's see if they can put it back up for us. She's going to put it back up.
I, I want a, we want a copy.
Oh, you want a copy? Yes, ma'am, that's not a problem. That's not a problem. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Oh, do I need to use that?
Yeah.
My question is, I, I understand the law about going into a school and not being like, "Do this, do this." At the same time, we're encouraged to go to the school so we can see what's going on.
Right.
So it's just kind of this.
Yeah, let me, let me explain it another way.
Okay.
I, I really believe if there's a question, it's probably because I confuse people, okay? So let me, let me try this. You are encouraged to go to the school to see what's going on? That's fine. You, you are supportive of your school. Imagine if, if a principal called you and said, "Hey, I want to show you something that's going on." And you say, "Oh, no, Geis told me, I can't come to the school, I can't." Uh-uh, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, there's a difference between praise, encouragement, observing, and coercion, and compulsion, and intimidation. You, in your heart, may not have any ill intent, but a lot of our people are going, "Oh, my gosh, it's a school board member." With that name and with that title comes power in the eyes of those that work for you. And they're trying to decide, is she here to encourage me? Or is she here to try to get me to do something? So just be careful when you're there that it's for not to investigate things. We can't do that. Not to coerce things, we can't do that. But to simply learn and gain more knowledge. Now, there are other reasons why we generally don't allow board members to go in and observe teachers. I get that a lot, and you didn't ask that question. But I get a lot of questions. "Mr. Geis, can I go in a classroom and observe a teacher?" And the answer to that is no. We, we have student confidentiality issues. We have an evaluation plan that says the board does not evaluate anyone. And statistically, when that board member goes in there, a lot of times, they start saying, "Well, I don't think the teacher's doing this, and I don't think the teacher's doing that." And as a general rule, it, it can be a problem. But there's nothing wrong with you going to a school. It's just, I want us to be mindful of why we're there and what message that we may inadvertently be, be sending. And, and let me tell you something about personnel, too. I told you, you can't hire, you can't coerce, and you can't compel. Let's say that you heard, you picked up on the street that, that the superintendent is considering hiring John Geis. And you know me. You know that I had some problems somewhere. There's nothing wrong with saying, "Superintendent, I, I understand you may be considering this. You really should check this reference, this reference here." That's different than saying, "Hey, don't hire him. Hey, I want you to hire him." Or here's my favorite, when superintendent told me that a board member came in and said, "Hey, Sue, man, I see we got your evaluation on the agenda for next month. You know, we, we got to fill that principal position over at such and such school. I really think so-and-so would be great for that job. But you know, we got your evaluation coming up there right after that." You know, so he didn't say, "You better hire this person." But he, the board member, used the evaluation that was coming up as a veil threat. If you don't hire the person I want, that's going to hurt you on your evaluation. So those are little things. Any other questions, concerns? Members of the staff? All right. Thank you again, and I'm just so glad that I didn't get that nod that Lamont talked about. If you get bored and want to move on, just nod. So thank you so much for letting me come.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. We had him until 11:45. It's 11:41. Why don't we take four minutes for biology break and whatever else is needed, and we'll reconvene in five minutes. 11:46, we'll pick back up. 11:46, we'll pick back up.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we'll go ahead and find our seats, we'll get started again. All right, if we'll go ahead and find our seats, we'll go ahead and get going. All righty, at this time, we'll go ahead and get back on schedule. The next item that we're going to delve into is the review of the strategic plan. And at this time, we'll have two speakers, Ms. Andrea Okonski and Mr. Byron Hedrick with LeanFrog. Okay, Byron, go first.
Thank you. Good morning. I wanna walk you through a little bit of pre-training and some details of some training we are going to be doing with you guys. I wanted to start this morning, usually I'm telling you about status, but I'm not really going back to the start. So I wanna go back to the start a little bit to make sure we're all on the same page with what the project is, what we're gonna be doing, and what you're gonna be seeing. So, there we go. So the intent of this project, from the very start, was we wanted to take all this available data that we had and be able to put it into context and in a format that we could easily use to understand it at both the school level and the district level, so we could use it to make good operational and strategic decisions. So to do that, what we ended up doing was we took data from a lot of the public sources that's out there, but it's not in very user-friendly format. And then we also went into the departments and pulled data that was available that assisted in us understanding that public data that is usually published by the state. So we put those things together. Where we could, we developed comparisons to kinda help us understand how we're comparing in performance to peers and different benchmarks. We also then took all this and we put it into a set of interactive dashboards that you can use to drill in, to see the data clearly and understand the data and how it works. The whole goal of this was so that we could simplify that information and ensure that it was accessible to the leaders of EBR, the board, and the public, so that people could be on the same page with what's going on in the school system. Now, before I jump into what's on those dashboards and so forth, I wanna talk a little bit about what you're gonna see, and the language I may use, so we're on the same page there. When I say a dimension, that's kinda like a topic or a category. Like, for instance, enrollment, that's a dimension-level topic, if that makes sense. Staffing, in general, would be a dimension-level topic. Facility condition, those are the big frames. And then, when we talk about level of aggregation, when we wanna look at enrollment, do we wanna look at it by school and the detailed level of the school? And/or do we wanna also see the district, or both? In the case of the dashboards, what we've tried to do is take these dimensions and aggregate them at both levels. So you can dial into a school, you can dial into a board district, you can dial into a zip code, you can dial into a type of school, like all my high schools, at that level. And then also, at a higher level, we have a series of dashboards for the district overall. So you can look to see how you're doing as a district overall. And at that level, we have a lot of comparatives. So you can see how you're doing compared to other peer districts and other benchmark datasetsets. Inside each of those dimensions or categories, there are facets. And what those facets are, it's a granular level, so that you can better understand the data inside the dimension. So for instance, on enrollment, you would see enrollment numbers by race, you would see it by grade level, you would see it by education category, if that makes sense. You would have that level to go in and dive into to see. With that in mind, we basically have two sets of dashboards because of that aggregation level. We have one set at the school level and one set at the system or district level. At the school level, there's 10 dashboards, each one in one of those categories and dimensions, and I have them listed here. We have facility facts, occupancy condition, enrollment staffing, staff funding, utility costs, financial performance, academic performance, academic program participation, and extracurricular activities. Inside each of these dimensions are those sub-facets that take you deeper. And again, these are dynamic dashboards. Not only are we seeing one-year snapshot of data, we've tried to go back as far as we can. In most cases, the minimum amount of data is five years, in some cases, it's much more. So not only can you see one point of time, you can see trends inside these dashboards. Again, the goal here was to get you that holistic picture of how a school is performing, both operationally, academically, and how it's utilizing its resources. Now, the next level up, we have another set of eight dashboards that are at the district level. And these have comparisons in where they're available. So for instance, when we look at enrollment, we can compare what's been happening with EBR over the time span in relationship to other Louisiana school systems that are similar, to southeastern school systems that are similar, and to some national school systems that are similar. We have enrollment projections. Again, that doesn't have a comparison, but what it does show you is what were the actuals as what we projected over time, so you can see the accuracy of your projections and how that's moving forward. We have facility utilization, we have utility costs, staff funding, I have utility costs twice, and there's, sorry about that, financial performance and academic performance. Where I have utility costs, that is another form of financial pieces there, I'm sorry about that. It should've been, I think, staffing costs probably is what that was. I just realized it. And again, the whole intent of this is to support the district decision-making at the district level. Now, if I was to go into all these dashboards today and show you how to navigate that, first off, I'd put you to sleep, because my tone and my monotone engineering frame, I'm sorry. But the other thing is, you wouldn't get out of here. It would take me all day, especially trying to deliver that to each and each one of you. So we have a plan for that, I'm gonna share with you. Before I do that, though, real quick, the peers, these were set, I shared this with you months ago, these are the peers. We use basically enrollment demographics and expenditures as kinda the framework to pick these peers. Once you get in and start exploring this, if those need to be adjusted, you need to let me know. We can do some movements there. But the next thing is, what's gonna happen? So after today's meeting, on Monday of this week, Tuesday of this week, those of you, a couple of you have some access to these already, because you've helped me work on them so far. But each board member will receive, if you're not already invited, you will receive an invitation from the system we use to build these dashboards called Tableau. It will come from that email address at reghelp@onlinemailtableau.com. That won't be a spam email, that's a real invite coming from us, so you can log into the system. Once you receive that email, the following day, you're gonna get an email from me, Byron Atherton Leep dot com. In that email, I'll outline how you can log in, but more importantly, I'm gonna have a link that will allow you to sign up for a one-on-one meeting, so I can walk you through how to navigate the dashboards and how to use the dashboards and get your feedback. Now, I'm also going to invite the internal staff team that's helped me, if they can, to show up for those meetings. Now, I don't think they all can show up for every single meeting, but hopefully, there'll be some coverage from the staff team, too, so they can hear your feedback as well. The whole intent is for you guys to understand what's there in detail at a level that I can't really give you here at the podium today, and for you to provide one final feedback loop to us before we position these for release, if that makes sense. Any questions about that process? Does that make sense to you, why I would wanna do that individually with you guys? And again, we will be supported by EBR staff as available. But you'll see on the invite, it'll be the whole team, because they're gonna pick who can come and who can't. Yes, sir.
You talked about one dimension being the financial performance. When we're looking at school-level financial performance, what are the type measurements we're looking?
We look at expenditures, we look at funding sources, we look at, and I'm sorry, I can't give you all on top of my head, there's several there. And I can easily get that to you shortly. Sorry for my memory recall. Basically, what we try to look at is, we look at maintenance cost per square foot, we look at, and we try to normalize some of those facets, so you can compare one-to-one versus it just be a dollar amount. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
And if there's other questions, just jump in. And again, I don't think I was as thorough as I would like to be on that one, but I will walk you through it in detail. So the next steps, we're gonna set that review up with you guys, we'll go through everything. Again, we'll be one more time to give that feedback. Now, currently, there are some data points on the EBR website. You guys are aware that there are already some level of dashboard. In a lot of cases, this is a different level of data. What we are looking at doing is potentially combining or integrating this system into that structure, so that the public's not confused, you don't know, you know, do I go here, I go there? You go to one place to get what you need. We will take your feedback, and we will, the next step will be to consolidate what we've built into what the district has now. So we create that one central information location. And we will publish these dashboards publicly. So instead of having to have that login that you're using next week, you'll be able to access by just going to the EBR website, once we've completed them. The next step after that is I will be training internal EBR staff on how to update and keep them current. Keep in mind that these are annual-type dashboards, it's not real time, so it's not like you're gonna see them move week to week, but you will see them move annually. And again, the data is pulled at specific points for specific data pieces. We've built a data dictionary that says, hey, this is the data, here's where it comes from, here's a link, you can go get the data, and we explain everything about the data. So we will be training that, so it can be sustained over time. So this will be something you guys can use for years to come. Any questions about the project? Okay, I didn't talk you to death. Mr. Goday.
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment you and your team for pulling all this together, because as you mentioned earlier, we drown in data but lack information, and this is trying to take all of that data together and put it where it can become information, where we can use to make decisions and make plans and things like that. So thanks to you, thanks to all the staff who put in all the work to getting this data, because I know they got the data, you just did the aggregation. But looking forward to it, and looking forward to Ms. Geis and others being able to use this information to educate the public on the kinds of things we're doing and how we're doing them. Because there's a lot of supplication out there, I won't call it rumors, but supplication out there, that is probably incorrect, once they get the real data. Because in the absence of data, they can make up whatever they want. So look forward to this, and where we need to improve, we need to show we need to improve, and where we have done a good job, we need to be proud of the job we've done. So thank you.
Excellent. Okay, any other? Okay, great. You guys have a great day.
Good morning, good morning. I wanna thank Mr. Byron for his teamwork and collaboration before he heads up north and out the door for his next meeting. It's been fun to work with him, and we look forward to what's ahead in those next steps. And Mr. Goday kind of took my opening line there. I think our challenge or our call to action is how do we turn this data into information to tell our story in an authentic way, transparent way, that, as the superintendent said this morning, can restore public trust and actually show how we're tracking towards that greatness that we're in attainment of? Okay. And without talking to Mr. Franklin, he told us this morning that we should start our conversations, our communications with what are our goals and sharing our goals. So let's just jump in and do that. Our goals today are to review the strategic plan, to calibrate on those KPIs in the strategic plan, to examine our trend data in those areas, and the sources of that trend data, where the public can find that data to help us track our progress, and then launch one-to-three year targets. Just to level set, our strategic plan is our North Star. It guides us. Our mission is simple, educating all students for success. Our strategic plan is framed around three core areas. That's student achievement, operational excellence, and employee development. The KPIs that we discuss today will be grounded in those three areas. Before we do that, though, let's check on our current reality. If I can have some help with this, there we go. All right, so as many of you know, our high school data is gonna lag behind, but let's jump in on our current reality. Our most recent district performance score is sitting at a 70.1. We do anticipate the Louisiana Department of Education to do a release probably within anywhere between the next two weeks to 45 days. Their goal is usually to do it prior to December 1. Sometimes, the way holidays fall, it can be as early as November, as late as the first week in December. Our grad rate is sitting at a 72.9 with the most current release. Again, we're going through grad cleanups right now, and we anticipate a new number as quickly as the next week or two in that area. Our ACT composite is 17.4. We brought LEAP data to you a few months ago. We're sitting at 37% proficient in English Language Arts, 27% proficient in math, 23% in science, and 25% in social studies. Key in on that math there, since COVID, math has really made some incremental gains. Overnight with COVID, math went down 10 points. But math is the area that we have seen to continue to trend incrementally since COVID rebound. All right, on the demographic side, after realignment, we just went through October 1 reporting. That October 1 data, as Mr. Geis referred to it, hasn't been certified yet, but we do anticipate it to say that we've reported for 77 sites. That is down since realignment last year. We are the second-largest traditional school district in the state. If you throw Orleans in there, we're in the top three. And then our internal data pool on October 1 had 38,497 students at the moment in time when we pulled it. Again, we're going through data cert with the state right now, and we anticipate in the next 30 days that they will certify and release October 1 enrollment. It always fascinates me how that yellow column just seems to work out. Right now, we're reporting 49.4% females and 50.6% males. We are hovering around 89% minority students. Our black population is about 67%, white 11%, Hispanic 11%, we know that is the fastest-growing one, and Asian coming in around 3% to 4%. We are anticipating, when the state certifies us, being around 10% to 11% for limited English proficiency, and our economically disadvantaged number the last couple of years has fluctuated between about 74% and 79%. Yes, sir?
Just to be clear, all of these included, all types of, plus the type 1?
Correct.
But not type 2 or type 1?
Correct, yes, sir. Thank you for that. Everyone in our LEA, our type 1 charters that you guys authorize are included in these datasetsets. Because, Mr. Franklin also challenged us to know our audience, and because at least one of you rathers numbers than percentages, this is for you, sir. Here you go, your actual numbers of your subgroups, and then by grade level, your enrollment numbers. This is from our internal pool on October 1. This is from our internal poll on October 1. So once the state certifies, numbers may vary a little bit, but in a nutshell, this is where we're currently landing. As we get into the KPIs, everything we talk about today is going to be found publicly. Yes, sir? Do you have a question? Okay, you good? All right, so we did prepare, staff prepared for you guys, an individual scorecard on schools. It's printed for you. So as we talk about a KPI or an area for the district and you want to check on a school or two, you'll be able to do that. They are hyperlink there for the public who may be following along online. We do, as Mr. Byron referred to, maintain a district dashboard site internally with staff, and those have Tableau dashboards on there with some of the key areas we'll cover today. And then, as always, you can check out the Louisiana Department of Education's data library and the LDOE School Finder. All right, so how do we arrive at our key performance indicators? I'm going to take you guys back in time. As Ms. Christelle Slaughter worked with us to update that strategic plan, copious amounts of notes were taken on those sessions. As staff, we recorded those notes. Ms. Edwards and Mr. Cole took us through an exercise with department leads across the district where we asked them to look through those notes and to, and look through the strategic plan and to elevate areas where we could monitor. From there, we did a crosswalk with the Louisiana Department of Education's educational priorities. They have six that they have claimed on their website. If you recall, Ronnie Morris, Bessie President, came to speak to you guys a couple of months ago or within the last year about how they are building out their KPIs from their strategic plan. And so we did some checking in on those to crosswalk it and cross-reference it. Lastly, we know Louisiana will release new score systems. They've already started transitioning to Grow, Achieve, and Thrive, and we get school and district performance scores in the next 30 to 45 days. We'll see it under the new formula. So we wanted to make sure that everything that we're tracking supports that new formula as well. So you'll see the EBR icon, a goal box, and Grow, Achieve, Thrive on my slides moving forward. That'll show you where our KPIs are cross-referenced or aligned to that work. So Taylor introduced us to Amber earlier today. Amber is going to help us introduce and talk through our KPIs. All right, under the area of student achievement, if you would grab that page in the strategic plan that talks about our goals and initiatives, you would see six key areas emerge. That K3 literacy, the DIBELS piece that we talked so much about. ELA proficiency, because it doesn't stop at grade 3. I'm a former high school teacher. It goes all the way to high school for ELA. Numeracy is a key initiative by the Louisiana Department of Education, and we're going to track numeracy, not just K3, but K12. We're going to take a look at on-time graduation. We know historically, our grad rate has lagged behind our statewide peers. That's something we want to reverse. We're going to talk about college and career readiness, and as well as Taylor alluded to attendance and truancy. We'll touch on that as well. All right, so starting with DIBELS up in the corner, Amber tells us that KPI 1.1 focuses on student achievement and specifically K3 literacy. What you see in front of you represents all assessments in grades K through 3, bundled all grade levels together. And if you notice, we started at 2023. Why? As you recall, the department changed some of those policies around 3rd grade, and they changed that Amplify platform. So this is under the current way that we're doing business with DIBELS. You'll notice those changes at the state level have resulted in significant increases in student achievement. So therefore, KPI 1.1 is to increase the percentage of students who score at or above grade level on K3 DIBELS, all grade levels, to 74% by the year 2028. When you guys updated this strategic plan, you made it a three-year document. Our goals are going to be set in three years. Doesn't mean that we're not going to have milestones and incremental numbers along the way, but our goal was to get it to three out of every four are proficient in literacy by 2028, and then move forward with a new set of targets. KPI 1.2 continues literacy. It's going to focus on grades 3 through high school and students who take statewide LEAP assessments. This one, it was important to us to go back to pre-COVID. And if you look at the data in 2018, 2019, I do believe that 2019 was our strongest year to date under the current accountability system and ELA proficiency. And you notice, we still have not rebounded from that, from the COVID lag, and neither has the state. The state actually set a goal, I believe, of five percentage points in their targets. Ours here as a district is a little bit more ambitious for eight in the next three years, an 8% increase to not only get us back to those pre-COVID numbers, to get us to our highest attainment level at date, and then to close that gap that we have with our statewide The next, oops. The next slide is identical, except it shifts to math. Overnight with math, we dropped 10 points with COVID. And that's why I said at the beginning, to keep an eye on that math. It's steadily ticking back up, but we have a long way to go. And so what we have set as our goal is 11 points. 11 points would put us at our highest proficiency rate to date. It would put us ahead of those pre-COVID numbers, and it would also close that achievement gap with our statewide peers. KPI 1.4 focuses on the graduation rate. I've got here for you the last couple of years post-COVID of graduation rate. We know it lags behind. Class of 2023 is the last data set that is public by the department. Don't let this mislead you. Our highest number to date wasn't immediately that COVID year and thereafter, but there were statewide waivers because of COVID. Last year marked returning to a sense of normalcy without some of those waivers, so that's why you saw the slight decline there. And so now we're getting to high school students who entered high school after that post-COVID recovery. We're, we're looking forward to see what this next release shows, but all in all, our goal is by 2028 to hit a 90% graduation rate. That would put us an equivalent of a letter grade of a B in graduation rate. All right, college and career readiness is something that we focused on for many years and for a long time. And we've got public dashboards right now that show contributing factors to this and indicators. As we discussed a few board meetings ago, the department is going to change the way that it tracks this area. And there's a new term coming out, college and career, college, career, and service-ready is going to be a metric on their new scorecard. Internally and with the assistance of our, our friends at the state, we are anticipating our initial baseline in this new metric or this new category to be 19.9 or around 20%. So our goal would be then to move it to 25% incrementally and then go up from there. What does this measure? What does it mean? I've got in the corner there for you the slide from the Louisiana Department of Education that talks about, we'll be tracking students who take that advanced coursework. We'll be tracking students who earn those IBCs, do those internships, the jumpstart pathways, and then we'll be looking at those students. Louisiana is now awarding points for students who are military and service-ready through those who attain military acceptance. 1.6 actually has two pieces here. They both focus on attendance. The first is going to be the attendance rate. We know that attendance is something that we struggled with pre-COVID, honestly, and then post-COVID, it has really become a bigger issue. We also know that we talked to you guys and we shared LEAP scores, that when students do attend at school, we tend to see far more scoring in that basic and master and advanced rate than those who are, have inconsistent, inconsistent attendance patterns. So you can see the trend data here for attendance. Our KPI will be to increase the overall district attendance from 91 to 95 by 2028, and then you can see how we pair with the state over the last couple of years. The second piece of attendance is not just the daily attendance rate, but addressing those students who are chronically absent. So KPI 1.6B will be aimed at decreasing the percentage of students who are chronically absent. We, right now, we're sitting around 30 to 31%. We want to drop that below 25% in the next three years and then continue to set ambitious goals moving forward. So we're going to pause, and we're going to shift from student achievement to operational excellence. Yes, sir?
Two quick questions.
Yes.
One, under the graduation rate, could you explain some of this? Because graduation rate, I think people have pretty big misconception about that. Could you explain how that is calculated?
Sure.
And secondly, the definition of chronically absent?
Sure. Okay, so with graduation rate, and thank you, Mr. Goday, because I agree, and I think the department is working towards clearing up those misconceptions because the new scorecard will just simply report a rate. When you enter high school your freshman year, then the clock starts ticking, and you have to exit in four years. And so it's a simple numerator and denominator. Was I there on the first day of school, or did I enter for one day my high school year? If I did, I'm counted in the cohort. And then at the end, when we submit those transcripts to the state, and we have till August 31 of every year, so it includes some regrets, but when we submit those transcripts to the state, it's a simple numerator-denominator issue of what percentage graduated in the time that they were supposed to graduate.
But if they moved away?
If they moved away, there are certain lever codes where you can exit them.
If you know where they went?
If you know where they went, number one, and number two, if you have the documentation to apply those lever codes. If you don't know where they went, you are still on the hook for them. It is your responsibility as a school or a school system to find them, to dismiss them with the appropriate documentation. And we talk, you hear me at the mic, and you hear staff talk about data certification and data cleanup. Those are where those windows happen. For those students that we have the documentation for, we can apply the appropriate codes. We can clear them from our roster. The state does audit that. They come in and they question that documentation. And so on the back end, that's what those cleanup and certifications are about. Mr. Lewis, I think you had while we were on this topic?
Thank you, Mike, because that was my first question. But we talk about graduation rates. What about our subgroups for males across, with the black, Hispanic, white? How are males graduating?
And I would just, I don't have it in front of me, but I will just tell you this, Coach, and you know I have had these conversations. In the majority of our data sets, our females outperform our males in a majority of our data sets. We know that certain populations and subgroups are more at risk than others, and so we know, thank you for that, that our average right now is sitting in those 70s, but many of our subgroups are below that number. And the state does give us a number for every subgroup. And so when I come to you to present the grad rate, we're going to track as a KPI the overall district, but when I come to present to you that grad rate, we will break down the major subgroups for you guys.
Thank you, because I believe that is a truer indication of the health of our district.
Absolutely.
You know, the, the overall number is great, but, and you've heard me say this before, we've got to start at the foundation and build up. And if we've got subgroups not graduating or just falling between the cracks, then, you know, why do we go to work every day?
Absolutely. And I think, Mr. Goday, your other point was about chronically absent. And so absenteeism is tracked in a variety of ways. The attendance rate is who's there on the average on the daily. I can be absent, and I could have had my appendix out, and I could have a doctor's note. My mom could have written a note. I could have been an athlete, and I could have traveled for certain things. And so chronically absent really looks at like the time that I'm in school, excused or unexcused. And so if we dug deeper into our attendance data, many of them are unexcused. But we do have some students who are hitting that excused piece but are still missing instructional time. And we know with, the more time you're in front of that teacher, the better your results are going to be. And so we want to, we know that there's a difference between excused and non-excused absences, but we want to encourage students not to miss school at any point if they can. I know this is something that superintendent is passionate about, so.
10% after the first 20 days is chronically absent. So if you miss two days out of the first 20 days, you're considered chronically absent. So 10% out of the first 10 days, excuse me, is chronically absent. So if you miss one day out of the first 10 days of school, you're chronically absent. So that's the actual definition as defined by the state.
Can I chime in? Is that, I mean, ain't nothing really fair, but is that fair? In our district, like ours, it's highly transit, and, you know, kids don't even show up to school sometimes until after Labor Day?
Well, you're going to put me on the hot seat, Coach, but.
Well, I'm not trying to. Actually, the person I'm really talking to is Charles. Because I, I'm serious. Because Charles, because really, Charles, the public doesn't know. There's a lot of smoke and mirrors around attendance and what's, you know, chronic absenteeism, all of that. So I think if, you know, whether you put it on TikTok or put it in the advocate, if they know, then maybe they can be part of the solution. Because we're taking all the heat, or should I say, the schools are taking all the heat, and the superintendent's taking all the heat about something people don't even realize, you know, what the ground rules are.
And, and I think, to your point, Coach, there, there has been some conversation around truancy versus chronically absent. Because there's a definition for truancy, which is five or more unexcused tardies, five or more unexcused absences. And then there's chronically absent. So the, the real issue we have is chronically absent. And then the other thing is data. How are we documenting when students are late for school versus learning time missed? Because that's very different. So a student could be late for school but not miss any learning time. There's no learning loss. Because I could be late in the morning, but class doesn't, at 7:11, but my actual class may not start till 7:25. School may start at 7:10, but my actual first period class may not start till 7:25. I'm late for school, unexcused, I'm labeled truant, but I hadn't missed any class. So when we start talking to our attorneys at juvenile court, and we started expressing those concerns, they started to review those students had been labeled truant and saying that many of them have been identified truant because they were late for school, identified as tardy, but hadn't missed any learning loss. We've had students who have been in the top 10% of their graduating classes with 3.5 or above who've been in truancy on juvenile court for being truant because they were late for school but not late for class. And so I think as we dig deeper and look at our processes, we're going to see a decrease in the number of students who are not there. Our biggest concern is those who are chronically absent, just not in school at all. How do we go to their houses, physically go to their homes, knock on the door, and say, we need you to show up at school? So want to make sure the public understands those definitions and then how we are working to address those issues.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys. And with that, we're going to pivot to operational excellence. In a review of the page of the strategic plan and our goals and our initiatives for operational excellence, two key areas pop out: facility conditions and customer service. We're going to dig into facility conditions first. In our prep work for realignment and in the data pieces and the resources that we pushed out for realignment, next to every school that we evaluated or consolidated or looked at, there was a rating on the conditions. And so I think Mr. Cole might want to make a, a note here, but we're going to focus on those facilities that house students, and our goal would be for 50% to be in that good category. And it's, it's, the data here is, I think he'll tell you a little bit more about it.
I think it's incorrect. I think 60% have been identified good is, or is that correct?
That's correct. 60% are fair, 29 are good, 11%, and that comes from our friends at CSRS with the last study that was done. And with the vision that you guys have moving forward for a facilities master plan, we see opportunity here to change this piece. They're nodding? Yes? Okay. Okay, KPI 2.2 focuses on customer service. This is something in the dialogue of updating the strategic plan that kind of permeated into every area. Under the leadership of Mr. Cole and a dynamic young lady over here to my right, we have launched the Let's Talk app. And then through my education, that Ms. Tanya has educated me about Let's Talk, there's a piece called a CX score, and it's a customer service experience. I'm told that when we launched the app, our data was as low as 3, 3.4 range. We are now seeing ourselves, well, it goes, it ebbs and flows, but the latest average of the data she pulled was about 5.4%. Now, according to her work with our vendor and our consultant for this, the national average is 8.4, but in order to be considered in the good range, you want to be nine or higher. So therefore, KPI 2.2 will be to increase the average customer service rating and Let's Talk from 5.4 to nine points. We want to be at nine or above. I know this is a new initiative, so I'll kind of pause here to see if anybody has any questions, and we do have an expert in the room to help us answer. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Where it says that back-to-school transportation, central office, over 500 calls and 200 closed. What, what does that mean?
I'm going to phone a friend and use a lifeline here.
Okay, sounds good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What does that mean?
I'm going to phone a friend and use a Lifeline here.
Okay, sounds good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm glad that you asked that question. So you look to back-to-school transportation, back-to-school support. Not only are we taking a look at customer service enhancements throughout the district with Let's Talk, we're looking at customer service in-person interactions and trainings across all departments. Central office, over 500 calls came in directly to the wonderful young ladies Coach Cliff talked about, Ms. Latoya Dunn and Ms. Amber Thomas. Those receptionists were trained in-person in customer service, culture and climate before back-to-school and receiving transportation calls coming in, along with mitigating some of the risks associated with possibly phone banks or something just happening, right? We wanted to have different layers of support throughout the district for back-to-school. The main number, over 11,000 dialogues, text, emails, phone calls, active phone calls coming into transportation through the Let's Talk system, in addition to what was committed into transportation. The young ladies up front not only took 500 calls directly, they closed 200 directly themselves, outside of everything else going in and transportation.
So that doesn't mean there were 300 that weren't closed. That just means those ladies closed 200.
That means they were trained.
That's amazing.
Yes, ma'am, they were trained effectively to do so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So again, this is a new initiative for us, launched a few months ago. So as we move forward, we're going to assign someone on the data side to work closely with Ms. Tanya to be able to track this and report it to you at certain increments. Yes, sir, Coach?
Ms. Cole, correct me if I'm wrong. Those, we set the bar with that system for how long we should take a call to close, correct? So the higher we set the bar, well, the higher we set the bar, the better off we are, we're showing.
Yes.
And we're getting it done.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Every day.
Okay, we're good?
We're going to pause here, yes.
We have, we haven't finished operational, employee development, sorry. So our last two areas are employee development. Under employee development, we have two KPIs. One will track that required state, state-required professional development, the areas of literacy and numeracy. And the other, because time and attention and resources and the vision of the board is pointing us towards employee compensation, we'll be tracking that as well. So quickly, KPI 3.1 has an A and a B for the required literacy and numeracy trainings. I believe that Dr. Jackson and Ms. Edwards will be following me shortly later today and they will dig deeper into these topics with you. This data was provided by their teams. The state also in front of Bessie gives annual reports. So this data is reported publicly through them. You can see the numeracy lags and it's more recent. So we only have last year's data. We're awaiting the update there and we'll continue to fill it in. The last piece is something that we're excited to track. This is something new to us that we have not done before. KPI 3.2 will look at the increase of the district statewide ranking for the average classroom teacher salary. If you dig into the Louisiana Department of Education's data library, they print out or put out an annual report on district salaries. There are various columns there and you can filter and you can rank. You'll see over time the EBR average and the state average. We were careful to pick the column without stipends. It's just the base salary because we know that that's a goal of the board. And a look at our rank. Our goal would be to move ourselves above the 10th ranking, 10th place ranking by 2028. So closing us out, we've looked at 10 KPIs, two of them with an A or a B. Under student achievement, you can see in the data source column, all of these areas are publicly reported on the Louisiana Department of Education website. Over on the right, the facilities, one piece comes from CSRS. The second piece is from our counterparts at Let's Talk and what we can run those reports internally. Under employee development, both of those pieces can be tracked through statewide reports. What do the stars and the plus signs mean? The stars mean that that KPI is currently presented or reported in some kind of way on our district dashboard page. The plus means over the next 30 to 45 days, we'll be tweaking those dashboards and we'll be slowly by second semester adding those remaining pieces for these newer KPIs. All right, and so this brings me to the end. And I started my journey at central office as a Title I Coordinator of School Improvement. I'm looking at Dr. Bethley because she and I worked together in that role. And in the school improvement cycle, you start with data. You go to your analysis and planning, action and execution, and then how do you monitor and evaluate it? My friend and colleague, Mr. Casey Gilbert, loves to make baseball analogies in the spirit of the World Series. I'm your leadoff batter today. And so what will happen over the rest of the afternoon is my colleagues will come up and talk to you about that analysis, the planning and the execution pieces, starting with student achievement. Ms. Edwards, assisted by Dr. Jackson and some Ms. Laura Williams and other members of the schools division. Operational excellence, you'll hear about city suites implementation, facilities master plan from our operations team. And then under employee development, I believe Ms. Edwards and Dr. Jackson will come back again and talk to you about those key areas with support from Ms. Lisa Smothers and some others.
Let's go back to slide 26 very quickly.
Sure, Amy, can you help with that?
Right there. I just want to make mention that all of what we have developed relative to our key performance indicators came directly from the board's push around our strategic plan and then our three operational pillars of student achievement, operational excellence and employee development. Oftentimes, we hear school systems have strategic plans that are about 150 pages and just sit on a shelf. But when we worked a year ago to develop the strategic plan and then talk about the areas we really wanted to focus on, it's really important we narrow our focus. And these are the areas, one, in alignment with the strategic plan, two, in alignment with the state's goals and objectives. And then three, making sure that all of what we are addressing leads to our students learning at a high level in a safe environment with support for our teachers. So again, we want our students to learn at a high level in a safe environment. And we want to provide a tremendous amount of support for our teachers. And so everything is connected to the strategic plan. And I'm happy to say that we are doing this work in an effort to be aligned with what the board has developed as our objective. So I want to always make sure you all know that every day our work is aligned to what you all established in the strategic plan.
Thank you.
Good job, Andre.
Thank you, Ms. Okonske. Okay, so now, using my school analogy, there were two periods of the day that I loved the most when I was in school. Recession and lunch, right? So if we can do this in staggered groups, if the board can go and grab their lunch and come back, that will facilitate us having a working lunch. And then after the board gets back with their lunch, then we'll ask this side of the room to go get their lunch and then we'll ask this side of the room. So three different groups. So board, if you'll go ahead and dismiss yourselves and grab your lunch, we'll then, when they get back seated, we'll have student achievement, Ms. Katasha Edwards and Shanoa Webb present their student achievement as we're sort of being quiet and grabbing lunch. Because we want to keep the train moving, all right?
All right, so we're going to go ahead and continue on as individuals grab their lunch so that we can get you out here at the time.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and continue on as individuals grab their lunch, so that we can get you out here at the time that we set. The board members are back in, and so at this time, while others are quietly getting their lunch, we'll talk about student achievement. And at this time, I'd like to bring forward Ms. Katasha Edwards and Shanoa Webb, who will walk you through student achievement. And as they're doing that, this side of the room can go and grab their lunch, and we'll keep going. Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I'm so grateful that I did not stand between you and lunch. I'm glad I get to have lunch with you. I was worried about that when I saw the agenda. I said, "I don't want to be between them and lunch." So, we're excited to be here, to share a little bit around strategy, implementation, monitor, and support. Ms. Okansky did a great job of setting a stage around our KPIs. So now, we want to talk about what is our strategy? How are we implementing that strategy? How are we monitoring that strategy? And how are we supporting it? So I have an opportunity to have today, I'm gonna have Ms. Shanoa Warren here, the Executive Director of Early Childhood; Tiffany Jenkins, our Chief Student Services Officer; Laura Williams, our Chief of Schools; and Dr. Claudette Jackson is gonna segue into that employee development section. So before we can talk about how we're doing, what our strategy is, we have to talk about what is our systemic framework? Like, how do we plan to achieve these KPIs? So, what is our continuous cycle of improvement at all levels? So if you look here, we have from the system level to the student level, what our systems and structures look like? What are we doing from system to students to achieve these KPIs? So if you look at the system level, we have our system-level district-level I L T. So if they were all in the room, I would tell them all to stand, because even though we have the honor of focusing on student achievement here with you today, it's really everybody in the room. We're all vested in improving student outcomes. At the system level, we have our long-range plans, and it's guided by student need. And based on that, we allocate resources to our schools. At the school level, school leaders, they use data to inform their school goals, their collaboration, and continuous improvement instructional practices through I L T and teacher collaboration. Then we go to the teacher level. At the teacher level, our educators are using individual student data as the foundation of informing that instruction that happens on a daily basis. They're able to accelerate and intervene based on those individual student needs. So, when I moved into this role just about a year ago, superintendent challenged me, "What are our systems and structures to move student outcomes?" So this is our system, and we're gonna go through how our strategies fit into these structures that we're utilizing. So before we go into our strategy, we're gonna do a step out. I get it, we're gonna step out during this presentation to get some clear information on how we're utilizing each of our strategies. Ms. Williams is gonna come and step out for us on that monitoring piece through our walkthrough and data review process that we've implemented this year.
Good afternoon. I know that we had an opportunity for Ms. Okansky to share with you what our KPIs are. When I first became a principal, there were three things that I was told. I was told that make sure that you take care of the children, the money, and whatever you want done in your school, you must monitor it. So, the way that we are monitoring our KPIs is through our walkthrough and data review process. It's a cyclical approach. We start with first our walkthroughs, then we offer feedback, we offer follow-up and ongoing cycles of coaching and support. But most recently, what we implemented was a data review process where we visited 27 schools, which is about 40% of the schools in our district. And I heard coach say, "I'm tired of us working in silos." We went to that school as a district instructional leadership team. And if you were a part of that team, could you please stand at this time? If you attended any of our data reviews, please stand. It was an all-hands-on-deck approach. We did it over a five-week period. It was an integration of multiple components, where we had our district teams conduct walkthroughs while we were meeting with principals and they were sharing their data. They implemented walkthroughs where they used the Louisiana Educator Rubric. It was combined with a data review process led by our executive directors, where our principals disaggregated their data, but they identified key points. They looked at their strengths, their weaknesses, their opportunities for wins, and their threats. What could stand in the way of student achievement? Then we had a collaborative feedback and reflection period. Every member on the D I L T was able to ask thought-provoking questions. They were able to provide guidance. And the biggest impact was real-time support. They could support our principals in real time. So what was our next step? After we left, we disaggregated the data. We looked at attendance, we looked at academics, we looked at behavior, we looked at our cognitive. What was the next step? The principal then developed action plans. Once you had the data, now what? So they had put their action plans into effect so that they could address the deficits, but also play on their strengths. So they developed both acceleration and intervention groups. They developed attendance teams to address the deficits that we are experiencing with attendance. So then we strategically allocated district resources to support continuous improvement. But I have to tell you that the biggest win was the work that embodies the superintendent's guiding principle. It is, "Success is in the support." So we supported our principals and we met them where they were. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Edwards, if there are no questions.
Let's thank Ms. Williams. She did a great job. So when we heard from Ms. Okansky this morning, our first KPI begins at what grade level? If y'all remember. Kindergarten. It wasn't a K. So I think we would be remiss if we didn't share. So, in our district, even though our KPI begins with kindergarten, guess what? We began preparing our students before kindergarten. So, we're gonna call our K, pre-K, birth-to-three strategy. Ms. Warren is gonna come and share information about that, because we know that if we don't start in that space, our students are not gonna be prepared at kindergarten and beyond. So if you would play this video while Ms. Warren segues.
Children are showing up when they're not ready to learn in kindergarten. And one of the best tools in which to prepare children to be ready to learn would be early education.
Eighty percent of the brain development takes place in birth to the age of three, and ninety percent at the age of four. We are building our community and our future through our precious little one.
We're thankful for the matching programs that the state allows, but at the same time, we need to have a consistent revenue stream, not only to pull down this matching dollar for the state, but just to grow the number of childcare seats we have in our community. If we can get to where 100% of the children, particularly coming from distant neighborhoods and communities, are receiving that really high-quality early education experience, then we know that outcomes are gonna be much better for those families. And if we can be a small hole and play the part to help others understand what is necessary, and that we let schools have children arrive to them ready to move forward through the track, if it's necessary, then openly, we're gonna have better leaders for our community, we're gonna have leaders for businesses, workers for different trades. We're gonna have all of this. We're gonna have more college graduates, high school graduates. That's all very important to helping the communities.
Happy Saturday. I want you to remember these three numbers: 18K, 12K, 5K. So, if we want our third graders reading by third grade and on time and ready for college or career, it must begin by birth. So, what I want you to note is here, even though, remember those numbers: 18K, 12K, and 5K, because we're gonna come back to them. We have goals, starting from our birth cohort. And they are to increase our literacy and math expectations. For our birth to pre-K three-year-olds students, we're gonna increase our literacy from 83% to 86% by May 2026. And then from math, 76% to 79%. And then for pre-K, literacy from 89% to 92%, and math from 80% to 83%. So, those are our goals. That 18K number means that we have 18,000 students that are economically disadvantaged in the EBR community. How many? 18K. Of that 18K, 30% only have access to public education. Thirty percent. That leaves you with 12,000 students. That's a lot of students. And guess what? Our EBR early childhood community network only provides access to about 5,000 kids. We're at a disproportionate rate of preparing students for kindergarten. The alarm is sounding. It is loud. And so, we have a big, huge issue. And so, even though we have these goals here, they're only for the 5K. 5K. That next goal, it says funding goal, to raise at least $2,000 in donation to match dollar-for-dollar by state fund. You see this Band-Aid? You know how you have something that's bleeding, and you put something on it, and it only stops for a few seconds? That's what this goal is gonna do. And the reason why, I'm gonna take you to the next slide. These are our three buckets: access, funding, and kindergarten readiness. Remember 18K, 12K, 5K? Kindergarten in Louisiana was just mandated about three years ago. The funding now comes through our MFP formula. But pre-K four, it lacks the funding. We only have few funding sources. LA four, and a four means it's only for four-year-olds. We have Title I, which I looked at Dr. Bethley. She helps us out to fund some seats. And then we have A G. But with funding from our federal and state level, it becomes what? Eligibility requirements. Parents meeting those LA four grant dollars, they have to meet the federal poverty guideline. If they don't meet it, if they meet it, they're tuition exempt. The ones that don't, they have to pay tuition by sliding scale. Then we have our Title I. That helps to kind of move forward or towards a universal design approach. But it's still not enough. Remember, 5K. And in that 5K, that's birth to pre-K four. So we also have some local dollars that help out, which is even less. That's our Montessori pre-K, three programs, that's at Belfair and Dufrock. Then we have our gifted program, which is very small in numbers for pre-K three-year-olds. And then we have our E S S program, which is federally funded, and those are our babies with disabilities. So, when we're thinking about kindergarten readiness, we are at a disproportionate rate of providing access and funding. And so, I need your help as board members. I'm gonna tell you this parable of the sower, and I'm pretty sure you've heard of this. There was a sower who went to sow seeds. Some of the seeds fell along the way. And guess what happened? The birds came and devoured those seeds. Other seeds fell on rocky ground. And what happened there? They sprang up real fast. No roots, and they withered up. Then some fell in thorns, and what happened? The thorns choked them. And then finally, the ones that fell out, they fell on good soil. And guess what happened? They grew. And they produce grain 100-fold, 60-fold, and 30-fold. Board members, you are the sowers. And you can intentionally be there in that last cohort. Sow those seeds. We can help with the funding to stop the bleeding. But we want to be more impactful. We want to go for a millage, so all kids can have access, so we can get to the 12K. That number is growing because babies are continually being born. So I plead with you. I'm gonna give you something to always remember, those seeds from our babies. They use their hands, and they have a tree. And you'll always remember that. This is why you're here to plant those seeds, so we can grow 100-fold, 60-fold, 30-fold. And so, they want to say thank you. This is harvest time. They were carving pumpkins. So our babies want to say thank you for investing in them, and we're gonna show that picture. Thank you so much. Say that again, I'm sorry. So I can tell you right now, the state keeps a number of students that are parents, I'm sorry, and families that are on a waitlist that do not have access to what they call the Child Assistance Program. In the Baton Rouge area, we have the highest rate. We have over 700 parents that are on that waitlist, because we just don't have the funding. And so, it's bigger than us. We need your voice to communicate why we need to go further than raising money, because we know that that's a temporary fix. We really need that millage. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
So now that Ms. Warren shared with you the need for early childhood education, we're gonna move into our K three strategy. When we get those students in kindergarten, what is our strategy to support them and move their student outcomes? So we want to ensure that all of our students, you see that there? That all of our students read, write, and think on grade level by third grade. We know that third grade is that area where students are assessed, and if they are not on track by third grade, then there's possible retention. So we're doing that through early identification of their learning needs, evidence-based teaching practices, and family engagement, because as so many people have said throughout, we really believe that success is in that support. Thank you. So in these three buckets, this is our strategy. We want to make sure that our foundational curriculum is aligned to the science of reading, making sure that all of our students receive instruction in the five components of reading. We want to make sure that there's high-quality instructional material and instruction in each of our schools. In that early identification and intervention bucket, we want to make sure that we're utilizing that universal screener, the DIBL's assessment, and that we're utilizing our M-class progress monitoring to make sure that we're progressing students along the way, that it's not an aha moment when we get to the end of the year or the middle of the year, because we're progress monitoring our students throughout, and that we're utilizing those supplemental high-doses tutoring funds.
high-doses tutoring funds, where we see students that need that additional support, that we're able to give them that support. The last bucket under that K-three literacy initiative is making sure that we're leveraging literacy leadership and continuous professional learning. Like, what does that look like? We want to make sure that we have strong professional learning at the district level, our strength and structures that we talked about a little bit earlier, and that we're having those family engagement opportunities. Most of our schools have literacy nights, DIBELS nights, lunch and learns. We want to make sure that we're giving them that opportunity, and many of them also host virtual options to engage families around literacy progress for students. So that is to come. So that is going to be part of what we segue into in a moment. So if we'll hold it, we'll get to that in just a moment. But great question. So we talked about our K-three literacy strategy. We want to move into our ELA and math strategy, which is not different than our K-three literacy Here, we want to make sure that all of our students have access to standards-aligned instruction. How do we do that? Through implementation of our high-quality instructional material. I think I was in a conversation this week with Mr. Smith, and oftentimes you hear, not just in East Baton Rouge Parish, we want to hear about interventions and remediation, but those are tier-two and tier-three supports that we provide. But we want to provide good first teaching. If we provide good first teaching through our high-quality instructional materials, we believe that our students are going to get the support that they need. In the event that they need additional support, we have those supplemental buckets that we can support them with. So what are, what are our three buckets in ELA and math? The highest leverage is that high-quality instructional material, and the way that we want to do that is, we want to build experts on all of our campuses. I keep thinking Mr. Smith, he's going to say, I'm making him come up here. He used the analogy in one of the data reviews, that each of our schools is like a mini-city. So on each of those mini-cities, we want to make sure that we've built a team, a winning team, as Dr. Smothers would say, on each of those schools. And how are we doing that? We're providing that job-embedded professional development, vendor-led, and I use vendor-led because our curriculum is through various vendors, but we're not just stopping with the vendor-led PD, we're supplementing with our district-level curriculum teams as well. And one of the things that we're doing this year, we're creating content leader sessions on all of our schools at the district level, where each of our schools sent an expert. So we're building our bench, per se. In the area of monitoring and support, we have created the Common Formative Assessment Model and the Benchmark Assessment Model to monitor progress. For the first time, we're all looking at the same data across all of our schools. In all of the data reviews that we were in, each of those principals spoke to that CFA data, they spoke to the benchmark assessment data, and they spoke to their plan to support teachers and students with implementing that. In that very last bucket, where we look at that district-wide alignment of instructional best practices, here, we're talking about creating a coherent system of instruction. We want to have a common language. And then aligned with our common language, we want to have common expectations. So we're, how are we doing that? The multi-tiered professional learning approach. We're coaching the coaches. We're coaching at the system level, Ms. Williams and the executive directors. She saw my line, but coach, no longer are we operating in silos. Everybody in this room is at the table, and we're coaching us to be able to coach principals, to be able to coach teachers, so that we can get the student outcomes that we want. We have district-wide lesson preparation supports, and this is just an, an opportunity for us to support teachers with going into that curriculum to prepare for the students that they have in front of them. How are they taking this curriculum that's created? Is standards-aligned, is standards-based, and within that curriculum, there are acceleration opportunities, intervention opportunities, ESS supports, and ESL support. So how are we coaching our teachers to be able to do that? To be able to support the students that they have in front of them? And we're still utilizing those structures of IOT and teacher collaboration throughout.
The last bullet point in the second bucket?
I think I did something right.
Basically, talk about high-dose tutoring?
Yes.
And I think you and I had this discussion last spring. Last year, I think that came down the pipe so late.
Yes.
But, so are our high-dose, the people who are performing the high-dose tutoring, have they been able to put together a particular plan for each student? An academic profile, I guess is the word I'm looking for, for each student that they're, that are involved in the high-dose tutoring?
Okay, great question. So I'll tell you where we are with that. We have about seven vendors that we're working with to utilize high-dosis tutoring, but those are external persons, they're working in partnership with our school principals. So each of those vendors, they have been able to execute their contracts, identify the students that they're going to work with, and work with the principals to see, because on each of our campuses, we have varying levels of capacity. Some schools may have a need in K-three and need the vendor to support in that area. Some schools may have a need in three-five math. So we've been very intentional, allowing the partner to fill the gap that the principal may have. Then based on that, we are at the point where each of those vendors are launching. I know that a few of our vendors have already launched their sessions, but I don't want you to think that high-dosis tutoring waited for any vendor, because on our campuses, we know that high-dosis tutoring is an intervention. So our principals begin day one, knowing those students that are identified based on LEAP and other assessments that had them pre-identified, any students that we were waiting on, our kindergarten students, their interventions may have started a little bit later. Once the vendor was in place, they said, we want you to be intentional with this set of kids for this ten weeks. But when the vendor finishes, we won't stop, because if that student is not on level, we're going to continue to intervene. So to answer your question, because I know you're going to say, she did not answer my question. They are in a place where they are meeting each of those schools, where they are for each of those students. And we have been asked by LDLE, they're going to come do kind of like a ride-along, where go out and observe. So I'll invite you when we go in and observe some of the vendor partners, so you can see the type of work that they're doing.
The all these vendor partners are okay with that? Just the guys from the bottom of the hall?
Yeah, I want, I want to bring you to the, the teacher observation, but I'll bring you to the vendor partner. Yes. Ms. Gordon, yes.
Because I was, I'm sorry, Coach, I'm just jumping in because I, I thought I was projecting. Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to give some insight, because 100 Black Men was one of those vendors last year, so depending on, as Ms. Elwes just said, depending on the type of program that you build out, you may be student-specific. We work directly with students who need intervention. So that was tier-two and tier-three students. Those students specifically were behind on grade level. So we had to build out a student performance plan for them, check in with the teacher, check in with the parents every week to make sure we keep them all up to speed on what's happening on grade level. So I can't speak for all of them, but I do know that some of those vendors, they do, they are very much student-specific, because you have to be very engaged at that level when you're doing high-dosis tutoring.
Thank you, Mr. Lannister, and to chime on to what you said, and just to segue in, and in alignment with the, like, last year, it was high-dosis tutoring is legislatively mandated. Everybody go forth and do it. This year, when you look at all of the guidance that's been given by the state, it's about monitoring and measuring the quality. So that's where we are. We're trusting our students to work with these vendors, so we are going in to monitor and measure the quality, along with the school principals, to make sure that we have the right people in front of our students. Yes, sir.
Thank you. A couple of years ago, we started off with a program that was a little controversial at the time, about having literacy coaches and math coaches in the schools. How, you know, to what extent are we still using those? And, and how are we implementing the science of reading across the board?
Okay, great question. So this year, literacy coaches and math coaches, specifically literacy coaches, were funded through CLSD funding. And at that point, there was a large sum of funding to fund literacy coaches. So what we were able to do this year, and we were also able to use federal programs to fund math coaches. This year, we have opted to fund instructional specialists and mentor teachers on all of our label schools. And back to that content leader specialist, have our principals identify who is the expert in that area. So there may not be a literacy coach, per se, but there is an instructional expert on all of our campuses for all of our content areas. So that way, when the funding is or isn't, we've captained these people to lead that work. But in the same instance, so you'll know, we're in the final phase of that CLSD 2.0 funding. So literacy coaches were funded through that as well. So all of those schools that, with the UIN label, who had a UIN literacy coach, they remain on those campuses for this final year of funding. But on those campuses, they also have the instructional specialist and the mentor teacher, because that's the structure, that we're going to continue to do that work. Science of reading. So science of reading is embedded in our high-quality instructional materials. So I've been a teacher, I'm a teacher forever. Our natural tendency is to want to make something, go to teachers, pay teacher, do, you know, do something outside. So what we're doing is supporting our teachers to remain in the curriculum and supplement from the curriculum. If our teachers do that, it's grounded in the science of reading. So those components. Other things, that DIBELS screening and M-class, that's grounded in the science of reading. Yes. One thing that I'll add, I don't know if Dr. Jackson is going to segue into, one thing that we're able to do around science of reading this year is the learning labs. You going to talk about those? Okay, so I'll let her talk about the learning labs, which are grounded in the literacy and numeracy training, because we don't want teachers just to say, compliance, I hate compliance. We don't want teachers just to say, go to the training, and it goes away. We want to make sure that we're keeping that relevant and ongoing, so we have some strategies to do that through employee development. You shouldn't have given me the remote, because I keep going backwards. I know, I could feel Ms. Cole's eyes on me, saying, be brief. Am I controlling it, or are you controlling it? Okay. This is where I want to be. So we talked about our ELA and math strategy, and now we're going to talk a little bit about our graduation and college and career. So last year, myself and along with you guys, y'all attended copious amounts of graduations, right? While on that stage, I had an epiphany. We are not a K-12 organization. Our goal is not only graduation. We have a KPI around graduation, because we're charged with doing that, but we're charged with making sure that the day after graduation, our kids have a plan. Is your plan to enter the workforce the day after graduation, the day after college, or the day after service? But what are we doing around that? So I want to make sure that we elevate that as part of our graduation strategy. One piece of data I want to share with you, we're ensuring that, let's see if I go the right way. We're ensuring that all of our high schools have clear pathways that are aligned to the LDLE diploma tracks. Last year, we went from a hundred and thirty internships the previous year. This past year, inclusive of a summer, we offered seven hundred and thirty internships for our students. That was a four hundred and fifty-eight percent increase. And then in terms of industry-based credentials, because that's all part of this thrive component, with basic industry-based credentials, the previous year, we offered two thousand seven hundred and forty-four, to this current year, this, I'm sorry, this most previous year, we offered four thousand four hundred and fifteen. So we have this really intentional strategy, where Ms. Boyd and the workforce team have gone into our high schools, and all of our high schools have a pathway. CTEC is amazing, but we want kids to know that there's something on your campus that you can work towards, and if it's not on your campus, then you can attend CTEC as a supplement. So how are we doing that? The three pathways here, these were the Thrive accelerators that Ms. Okansky mentioned earlier. We have that ACT Work Keys implementation. We have all of our high schools in a pilot with ACT Work Keys. We have the district-wide ACT strategy, where we have some of our, our schools, high schools, working with BRIC, but we know that is for a class. But in addition to that, we have ACT available for all of our tenth through twelfth graders, ACT prep. And we have professional learning, because we want to create experts in all content areas on all of our campuses. And then the last area is that ASVAB and Military Pathway, because that is one of the qualifying assessments that students can take. And we have JROTC working on all of our campuses to support that. So here, I'm going to close. I feel like I skipped a slide, but I still feel like I was brief enough. I want to close the way I ended. We talked about that systemic structure that we have in place. This, if you've been in any of our data reviews, you've seen that, so all of our team has seen it. This is ultimately what we want to happen. We want to make sure that from the system level, there is this overall plan, and that it falls down to the administrator level on those school campuses, into our IOTs and our teacher collaborations on the campuses, to the individual teachers, to the students, and that we see that transfer of knowledge all the way to our students. So when we think about making decisions, allocating resources, doing any of the work we do, we always say that it doesn't happen if it doesn't transfer to the student level. So we're doing some intentional work around making sure that all of the work that we're doing at the district, the school, the school leader level, that we're able to see it all the way through, to improve student outcomes. So we're going to segue and answer Ms. Sule's question, and we're going to talk about that, those state-mandated professional learning opportunities, which we have a KPI around for the literacy and numeracy screeners. Good morning, good afternoon, good afternoon. So we're going to answer your question, Ms. Sule, hopefully throughout the presentation, but if not, I think we'll cover it, though. So we're going to segue into employee development. We know that there's a KPI that is directly correlated to our core commitment, employee development. So our core commitment, too, is employee development says that we will cultivate a culture of continuous improvement and collaboration by fostering professional development pathways for all employees, so all employees. The strategy around that says that we will strengthen educator expertise and system-wide instructional coherence. Really, basically, we're just saying here, the strategy is saying, through intentional, ongoing professional development opportunities, we will ensure that all K-three-required educators have successfully completed BESI-approved foundations, trainings, and all K-eight-required employees will successfully complete BESI-approved numeracy professional learning courses. What does that look like? I have a plethora of information here, but for brevity, I'm going to say, I didn't skip the slide. So this is the strategy. Go back once. I forgot I was doing my own slideshow a moment ago. It won't let me go back. So we're here. Act 108 of 2021 requires that all teachers and administrators of students in grades K-three complete LDLE-approved coursework in the science of reading and provide, provide successful completion, right? Proof of that. So whether you are a current employee, an employee entering into our system, or any system across the state of Louisiana, you have to have successful completion around So literacy professional learning requires, through Act 108 and a plethora of other acts that support Act 108, that all teachers and administrators, because oftentimes we forget about the administrators, of students in grades K-three are required to complete an LDLE-approved course in the science of reading. That course for this district, for this district, is LDLE Science of Art in Teaching Reading, which happened in 2024, 2025, that was introduced from the State Department. But in 2022, the East Baton Rouge Parish School System utilized letters, Alexia Training, to ensure. So Letters is a two-year course with asynchronous learning that bridges practice activities and
that bridges practice activities and live professional development sessions. It consists of eight units of study. It's timely. So it's usually about approximately 50-plus hours to complete the training. In EBR, we monitor that training through a database that's developed and partnered with the Louisiana Department of Education, also with Alexia and Letters. We also have an LDOE Canopy Science of Art and Teaching course that is offered. It is an asynchronous course. It consists of two modules, 12 modules, a part one and a part two. Each module consists of six modules. It takes approximately 30 to 52 hours to complete as well. And I need to go back and re- count something a moment ago. Actually, letters can take up to two years to complete. The LDOE is 32.
Let me interject this. So Ms. Sule and the board members know, at the time that this was a mandate, they gave every district an option of the professional development they wanted to choose. And at the time, you could choose two-year, you could choose one-year, because oftentimes EBR gets cited for not having completed all of the development. The reality is, we chose to take our time and learn these processes because they're extremely important. So when you see some smaller districts who chose smaller amounts of time, they have smaller staffs. We have a large staff with a large number of people in K through five who need the training, and some of them were, chose the training over a two-year period of time. And I know Dr. Jackson is gonna mention that, but I know you get that call quite often about us not having completed the science of reading. But I want to make sure the board understands it's based on what was chosen over a two-year period of time. So I want to make that, put that out front as we go through the process of understanding what we're doing, the choices that were made.
And I also want to share with you, and I'm going to get there, that when the East Baton Rouge Paris School System chose a letters or Alexia training that would take two years to complete, we actually chose that course a year late. So we started the coursework about a year, a year and a half after the expected start date should have happened. But I'll share a timeline of completion with you to help walk through that. So in all actuality, the course that the Louisiana Department of Education has developed, it's actually almost a savior in terms of completing, because the requirement for completion is about 30 to 52 hours of completion versus a two-year completion course. So now we're able to put our teachers and administrators and other persons that are in law-abiding positions that are required, we're actually able now to help to expedite the process for them, if that makes sense. Moving forward, here is a timeline of where we are in the district. So as I just mentioned, Act 108 was passed in 2021. We didn't start work here in the district on that until late 2022, right? So we didn't enroll our staff into the Letters Cohort A until late 2022. By March of 2023, Letters Cohort B had already begun, but we knew that that was not enough time to have the first completion. So we didn't start that on time as well, but we were enrolled. By fall of 2024, LDOE introduced a course, and they released a part one, which is about a year ago. March 2025, Letters Cohort A finished. So from September 2022 to March 2025, that was the completion timeline for Letters Cohort A. Spring 2025, LDOE releases part two of their coursework, because there is two of part two. November 2025, Letters Cohort B are expected to finish their first Cohort B completion successfully, because you have to successfully complete. Although the state has a goal of 2028 for 100% completion, and I'll share some information with you here about that, although the state's goal and timeline is 2028, our superintendent has an ambitious goal. And by 2026, which is the end of this school year, he expects to have a 100% completion rate, because he believes that we can do that. And so do I. I'm also gonna share some data with you, and this is why he believes that we can do it. So 2022, '23, school year, 0% completion. '23, '24, school year, out of 669 administrators and teachers, we had 144. Under the leadership, Mr. Cole has been very aggressive. We now have 536 that have completed out of 851. So that date, we indicated the dates here, we wanted to share because we want you to know that that was March of 2025, and this information is current only as of August 2025, the beginning of the school year. By November, end of November, these numbers should, numbers should look even better. Okay? While you're getting the mic, I also want to share with you that we've had a few more to matriculate from May to August. Over the summer, we had some persons to complete the training as well. So we are now at 572. And we just so happen to know, we're 67% complete across our district. And we just so happen to know that after this November run-through and the learning labs that Ms. Edwards just mentioned to you a moment ago, that we are in the process of facilitating, we will probably be 85, 90% complete.
So to complete the training, which is the science of reading and the math, that...
I hadn't gotten to the numeracy yet, but there are two.
Okay, so this is just the science of reading.
This is just literacy.
So in order, when they complete the training, is there like a test? Like, how do you know that they learned?
So when we say successful completion, there is an assessment at the end of the coursework that says you have, that you have to pass in order to have successful completion.
Okay.
So we do have a few persons, I think across the district, we have approximately four employees that have not yet been able to successfully complete, but they have completed the coursework.
Okay.
Okay. And we're working with that, those employees through the learning lab that's being established.
Students that graduate from college this December, I saw her thunder, they will meet the requirements. So we're doing this because the legislation said hurry up and train people. But students who finish a prep-provided program as of this December, they're gonna have that in their coursework. They're gonna take a praxis assessment that trains them in the science of reading. So at that point, we won't be playing catch-up. So we will be doing persons that enter alternative pathways that don't cover it, one off somebody that comes from another state, and maybe they didn't require that training. But we won't be in this constant catch-up mode. Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
We won't be in this constant cycle. And I wanted to make sure that I addressed the goal that's at the end of the timeline here. I want to also share some considerations with you for the timeline of implementation. And those considerations are, Ms. Edwards just mentioned one of them. But first, I want you to consider that there was a delayed launch. So the district enrollment began a year and a half after Act 101 had passed. I also want you to consider that, secondly, rigorous extended course. So that two-year rigorous extended course that our district decided to take to deepen understanding and have long-term impact, has just taken us some time to walk through that. But I do believe in building foundations. So I do believe that it's going to pay off for us. It's just that we have to get to that point. I do believe that, right? And I do believe that that, the choice for letters was needed in our district at the time that we implemented the science of reading. Okay? Third, I would like to share that ongoing participation. So initial, the initial course, the two-year course, is a course requirement for our current employees and new hires. But now we have the Canopy Ed course to support that. I also want to share a side note to piggyback off of what Ms. Edwards just shared. Beginning September 2024, this past year, completers in teacher preparation programs must have required number of semester hours in a teacher preparation program, hours or contact of equivalent completion hours in their college-enrolled course. What's going to happen with that in the teaching the science of reading is it will allow us by 2026 to have a first cohort of graduates that will complete December 2026. Now, when persons come into HR and say, hey, I want to teach K3, K5, they now have to show successful completion. Nine times out of 10, that will be mirrored on their licensure, right? So their teacher certificate will now. So then it will almost become a process of direct communication with HR at that point, right? So it will become, it's a praxis mandated assessment. So although we know that the state is giving us a 2028 deadline, since the first cohort will finish this December 2026, it is our ambitious goal that we will now begin completion of 100% completion by 2026. Really quickly, looking ahead, forgot. This is a part of our current plan for action. We will assist all staff in K3 required positions with timely course enrollment and progress monitoring of timely completion. We have already started this work. It is our current plan of action. We will provide job-embedded full-day sessions and a one-time stipend, hopefully, upon completion of the coursework. We are working on that. We are also working to support principals with creative scheduling, options for substitute teachers who work sessions, and provide district-led professional development sessions that will reinforce the science of reading skills, because we don't want them to just have a one-time professional development opportunity, and then we don't continue the learning and improvement. Ongoing plan of action, we will collaborate with HR to target new hires for course enrollment during onboarding processes to expedite timely completion. We just mentioned that a moment ago. Continue job-embedded full-day work sessions and scheduling supports, and maintain and share progression reports for district school leadership. And finally, we're just gonna share about those learning labs. We're going to continue to implement the learning labs. What the learning labs do is they provide time and additional space for teachers to be able to come to the professional development center and work through that work aggressively, if that makes sense.
So she went on a really in-depth explanation of what we're doing for literacy. We're mirroring the same thing for numeracy. I think the only difference is, numeracy gave us a longer runway to get implemented. We're not required to be completed with that until 2027. So we have time, but the great news is that we're already well on our way. We have 54% of the persons that were enrolled in it the previous year. We're well on our way with that. So we're doing the exact same thing. And the other thing too, since the state gave a longer runway, they gave themselves a runway to create a program. So we have a state-assess program that we can access. The other piece is our completion will mirror in a few years, just like students finish college with the literacy training, 2028, they'll finish college with the numeracy training and the numeracy assessment. So legislation happened, state rolls out policy, they say, get it done. But then on the back end, we go back and work with our prep providers so that it's seamless, so that we're receiving candidates that have already had this training. To Mr. Gode's point is, that's the compliance piece. We continue working to make sure that we see application. So through her learning labs, through the differentiated type in PD that her team is leading, we're gonna continue to make connections for our teachers, because we're not gonna just do this because we have to. We're gonna do it because it's what's right for kids.
So on board, I want to make sure everybody knows, we, on our agenda, we moved up the 330 component to now. So our next section is the last section we have, all right? So I want, I want to make sure you all know, we don't have two more areas to address. We moved the 330 session up. All right, move the 330 session up.
I am, I am. I just want to say too, and I am, Mr. Cole did impress upon us the brevity of, the incredible brevity to have. I do want to tell you that we are in a much better place with literacy, with numeracy implementation because of the start of it, right? So we're in a much better place, and the numbers will mirror where we are now with literacy implementation, because the pace is going to happen a little bit faster. So I just wanted to bring that together with you. And I also want to share with you that that is just a touch of where we are in terms of employee development.
Ms. Dr. Jackson, Ms. Jackson, Ms. and Ms. Edwards. I think some of you guys have heard talk about professional development. And I think back, right after COVID, a lot of this professional development was taking place on laptops and virtual and all that. I can remember when I first started working in EBR, professional development was key. People used to come to EBR to learn how to give professional development or provide professional development. In your bullet points, there's four bullet points that talks about ongoing embedded professional development. Great teachers make great students. If you can't help your teachers to go from good to great, you definitely cannot help your students go from good to great. So thank you, and thank you, Ms. Edwards, for the professional development.
Thank you. Please, can you please come see me? Because I cut off half of the presentation where I wanted to discuss that, just where we are with professional development, because that's my charge. But please come by and see what's happening now.
All right, that was a lot of information post-lunch. And that was a heavy lunch. So I applaud you for pushing through. And now we're gonna talk about operational efficiency. We have Ms. Pam Whitley, Casey Gilbert, Judith Anderson, Amy Jones, Dr. Lisa Smothers, and Latasha Levitino, who will come to us and give us their presentations with their goals of operational efficiency. Mr. Gilbert?
How y'all doing today, folks? All right, very good, very good. So I'm gonna lead off. I know Mrs. Pam just stepped out to the ghost of the restroom, but I'm gonna get in, I'm gonna get out. To the superintendent's piece, I'm gonna be brief. Master facility plan, the why. The first charge for the superintendent, right, was rightsizing our school district by putting our students in the best seats to be successful. Realignment 2020 time summer, did a great job. Give yourself a hand clap. Give yourself a hand clap. The second why, the second why was to make sure, as a mandate from the school board, would say, hey, Mr. Cole, we need a successful master facility plan to lead us into the next generation of work as we align academic transportation enrollment facilities needs. The next why is this. Academic prioritization and alignment, we have to have it. The next why, being smart stewards of our allocated dollars. The next why, escalating costs and diminishing returns. What it costs, what it costs a CSRS at the beginning of the tax plan to build a school has pales in comparison to the cost now. That's the whys. The next why is this, is making sure that we're going after what we need to go after in order to be able to drive, excuse me, in order to be able to drive academic success, operational excellence, and employee development. Let me give you two why-nows. The first why now, we have momentum. Successful realignment 2025. We're already in the space of being efficient and operational excellence. So right now, strike whether iron's hot. Carpe diem, seize the day, seize the moment. The second why now is this. If not now, when? When? The FER maintenance cost, the last time we reported before this board, was right around $150 million, and it's going up. $150 million and it's going up, right? The same way that price of milk went up for you, Mrs. Sule, it went up for me as well, right? It's the same thing for the school district. So we have to make sure that we're being smart and pragmatic about the way we're approaching this. So right now, at this time, I want to get ready because we have been working diligently behind the scenes with Mrs. Pam Whitley, who is our chief strategist and consultant in this work right here. She's going to walk us through the robust plan. So please, all of you, put your hands together with Ms. Pam Whitley up. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wow, wow, wow. So much pressure, so much pressure. So I'm going to look to the superintendent first and tell me, what's my time spot? Is it this small or this big? Okay, so. All right, I hate coming in front of this group as a presenter because I kind of feel like I'm part of the team now, so. So I think, you know, I wasn't present when the superintendent did his live interview, but I was watching on television and I saw the conversation around facilities. It was a big part of kind of this is big for this district. So we started, you know, last year with realignment. And one of the things I want to start by doing is level setting, what is a facility's master plan? It is not a book that we plan to put on the shelf. It becomes a collection of data and information related to what your facility's portfolio looks like, what it costs to maintain that portfolio, what, how that portfolio aligns with your programmatic goals. So what are we going to do in these buildings? And of course, we have to look at the landscape and the number of students we have today and the number we're planning for in the future. So by getting all of that information, we look to the board to really kind of make decisions. And we see it as our responsibility to bring you data that becomes information that supports that decision making. So when we talk about a facility's master plan, we really have to kind of first look at what are we responsible for today? What buildings are we using today? What vacant properties we may have? And really understand what that looks like. Casey made a point that I want to kind of drive home, and that is, it doesn't matter if it's in your household, if it's in the school, if it's at your church, or whatever organization you're in, what it costs to deliver last year is different today. And unfortunately, that trend is going to continue. So what you can get for the resources that you have now, you will not be able to get the same thing in five years. That's the important piece that a facility's master plan can put in place for you. When you integrate it into your decision making, you can understand your priorities and align it with what your goals are for the future and make sure you're making smart decisions about your resources. I don't want this to be a presentation, so I encourage you to ask questions, stop me if something isn't kind of, you know, ringing, ask me the tough questions. So this is all about a plan to get to the plan. The first thing I will say is this is not a, you know, two month exercise. We write something down on a piece of paper and it's a plan. I am a techie person, most of you know that. So in software development, we use something that we call swim lanes. And I chose to use a parallel to swim lanes versus phases because swim lanes really allow you to have a plan in each lane. It's multiple activities going on at the same time that are all related to getting to the end result. When we talk about phases, we think we do one phase, we complete it, and then we move to the next phase. So really want to change the mindset and say, okay, this is a lot of stuff happening at one time that all has to come together. So the first swim lane is really around organizing that. So we call that our project initiation and our governance. Whenever you take on something this big, and you'll remember, one of the early discussions we had when we did realignment was about guiding principles. We have to decide as a group before we start, what's important to us and how we're going to make decisions. Because I promise you, that gets lost in a big project. So that first body of work is all about establishing the right internal, what I call our internal committee or our planning group. And that is not just people working in facilities because we have to understand the programmatic alignment, the need, the financial picture today, and kind of what we're planning for in the future. So that becomes a body of kind of ready, set, go work that gets us started. The next thing I would say is in this discussion, our strategic partners and the relationships we have outside of the district are going to be critical because we all live inside of the EBR ecosystem. So it is not just about what we do. You know, we've already started having discussions with Bill Baton Rouge, Breck has facilities, the city has different plans. So we want to make sure as we build our plan, we do understand the bigger East Baton Rouge Paris plan. So that's one. And the goal there is to get us to another meeting that looks like this when we can come to the board and really flesh out this plan. So we'll have some type of kickoff meeting where we have established what the plan is, what we have, and really be able to put a little more meat on the bone. So lane two is current state. So, you know, we've heard from several people today that talk about collecting, aligning data, understanding where we are. This is where we leverage all of that work. Where, you know, we have vendors that have information about maintenance, our facilities, we have the work that LeanFrog has done, really getting that into one framework that begins to structure what our plan will look like. And you'll see, that's a long body of work because we'll pull together the historical pieces from the tax plan investments, what were we able to do with the tax plan? And I have a belief that the buildings that you invested in, in the original tax plan, now need some attention. So we will really understand what we've done, what we have, and that deferred maintenance number is big and it's going to continue to grow. The other thing that you will get there is some insight into your systems, your HVAC systems, electrical systems, how are they surviving? Some of them are probably already over their useful life from a manufacturer standpoint, but ultimately, we want to know what that picture looks like. And we see that body of work really taking us through July of next year. To get there, we do think it's important that we engage all of the current vendors so that, because they have the data. Some of the data lives with the school district, but some of it lives in the work that they've been doing. So that body of work will take us a while and we'll work together to do that. In lane three, yes?
In lane two? What about the schools that are not in the tax plan? I'm talking about one school in particular that was removed from the tax plan the last time, it was the last school removed. And this particular facility is in dire need of being addressed. We can talk about it off, you know, off the mic, but it's one of our better schools and it is in dire need of attention.
So what should happen in that process is that should bubble to the top, to the top. We would have those facts and be able to compare the condition of that facility, the program alignment, does that building have everything that it needs to deliver the programs? So once we have that data, basically, we'll be bringing that back to the board because ultimately, when we get down to lane four, we're going to be prioritizing projects. So that data would then inform that decision for this body to make.
And that was the conversation with Mr. Cole, it wasn't quite zero to 100, it was about zero to 85, ninety, real quick.
Okay, okay. But, but to answer your question, we're going to get the supporting data to say that. Okay? Lane three, this one, you've talked about quite a bit and it's the vacant properties, vacant buildings, there's some land around town that's owned by, you know, the school district. So we began to talk about what, what's in that portfolio and to kind of prioritize that portfolio. I don't think that we're in a position today to address all of them at one time. So we're suggesting that we group them with the discussion from the board saying, hey, these are the first ones we want to talk about, and then do some type of alternatives analysis. There may be some that bubble to the top in terms of liquidating because you can generate revenue to invest other places. There may be some that we can use as swing sites when we're doing projects on some of our schools. And there may be some that we want to do something different. We've talked about, you know, doing some public private partnerships that maybe end up in some type of housing development or something like that. So we don't have the answer yet, but this is where we would have that discussion. In this case, we see ourselves working in strong partnership with some of the external partners. Because if we're looking for public private partnerships, that drives us to a conversation where we may have other investors that want to have some discussion or opportunity about these areas. Yes?
I was going to say, if I may, it may be more beneficial for us as a board and maybe it's something that we discussed with the superintendent, that we can possibly take a trip somewhere where we have seen this or this has been employed in real time, where they're doing public private partnerships, where they've either turned former schools into a particular project. But it just helps to give us a more in-depth understanding of what we can possibly do with our district. And not just that, but it helps us to also be able to be more informed when we go to the community and let them know that, no, we're not just doing this haphazardly, we're doing this because we saw it happen. We have seen the, the benefit of us doing this and this is why it's important that we can and how we do it.
Thank you, Board Member Melanes. You'd be delighted, no board leadership and the team met earlier this week and that was part of the discussion, where has this been done in other places? And then I was going to come back to you all and say, once we have a flushed out plan, let's go see what it looks like so we can come back and develop our strategic plan around that work, so.
So I like that comment and I'm going to kind of piggyback off of that. One of the things I think it does is it puts the school district in a driving position on developing communities. Because I'd be the first one to argue with all of you, if we give the property away and it becomes, you know, one of those things we don't want to see in the community anymore. So we don't want to become the people bringing the community down. And because you own the property, you can kind of drive what that investment and what that developer can do there. So I think it puts us in a good position in the city. So you took my lanes away. So what lane are we on? We're on lane four, I think. Lane four. So lane four is where the good stuff happens. We've collected all of the existing data, we're smart about what all of the vendors know, we've started to have the beginning conversations about some of our facilities and what those options look like. But this is where we begin to now start doing some forecasting. So what, how much do we have to spend going forward? This will feed your plans for the next tax plan renewal. Of course, we would suggest putting safety and security requirements at the top when we start to prioritize the program. So we'll have a way to kind of talk about that. And then the, kind of work with our strategic partners, the superintendent just mentioned that we met with Bill Baton Rouge, but really understanding how we become really a leader in the community because we have these resources to kind of give back or contribute to where the community goes. And then the academic and strategic alignment. So we really want this, I've been to, you know, many schools now, thanks to this group, but what I will say is no two schools look alike. So what that tells me is what happens in the school is very critical to what we invest in putting into the school. That discussion is going to be huge and will help us kind of drive this work. You'll see, we're looking at probably sometime February next year, and of course, these are dates before we get everybody in the room, so they may shift, but we're kind of driving to try to get this done in two years. But the, what happens here is you get the first version of a master plan. We are looking to have this as a software product that is fed by internal data and your vendor data, so it doesn't become a static book on the shelf, it becomes a software package that allows you to run scenarios when you have questions. So, you know, we used to love in government, when they walked in your office and said, hey, there's another $15 million, what would you do with it? I always had a plan. So they always knew if they had to dump money at the end of the year, they could come to my office. So.
I just had a question. How does this connect with what we're using a LeanFrog for?
So LeanFrog, it connects because LeanFrog has collected a lot of data. They haven't necessarily built a software package, they're basically connecting some of your existing data to a tool that's called Tableau that really serves as a dashboard, so it gives it a view. But it's not in a system that allows you to do scenarios. So what we're, we would have here is, you know, for instance, you could ask, when we get there, we're not there yet, don't ask today, but you could ask, hey, how much have we spent on carrier air conditions in the last 10 years? I would be able to go in this system and understand that. You could compare one vendor's performance versus another vendor's performance right out of your database. If you find that one vendor is cheaper when you buy it, but it costs you more to have it for 20 years, you might make a different decision. So what LeanFrog has done is just taken kind of yesterday's data, all of that's historical data, and given you a way to look at it. This is going to give you a next level down data, very specific data about any element. You could look at roofs, you could look at buildings, you could look at maintenance costs, you could look at utilities costs, and then have the data you may need to make specific decisions. Does that help?
So we use the LeanFrog data to put into this?
So LeanFrog is using your data. LeanFrog collected data from inside of EBR from different places and really put it in a dashboard format. They don't, there's no separate LeanFrog data, they really just kind of aggregated it and leveraged what you had. So this is the next level down.
So basically, LeanFrog gave the foundational basis for this work to begin?
Yes.
They collected all of the information that you all needed so that you can start to integrate it into this particular plan?
I will take one word out of that.
Okay.
All. They collected information, but there's more to be collected.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Because we still, one of the things that I have a lot of interest in is what's driving your deferred maintenance cost? So is it that the buildings are just old or are there specific things in the building that are not living up to their lifecycle cost? What's driving that and how, when you build the next building, do you make decisions that kind of make that different?
So this plan differentiates the information that LeanFrog has essentially collected in. So if you want to get something, like you want to be detail specific in what you just said, right? How much, let's say a vendor, one vendor does this, this one vendor does this, we can, we can compare those two in an analysis and using the information that they've already put inside of the dashboard that you all have. And it makes it easier for you to disseminate how to plan better, basically.
Yes. But I also want to point to you, you're making me skip to lane six.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But in lane six, we're going to talk about integration and, maybe he's gone, I was looking for your attorney. But one of the things you will have to do here is to look at your contracts with all of your vendors that are connected to this part of your business. Because you want them keeping real-time data in this system, so you'll be able to get information. So whether it's the work that Hess does, the work that C R, uh, CSRS does, they should be putting it in here. What Byron had to do was go and find it in a spreadsheet. Did that answer the question? Okay, so.
Sorry, sort of. I think really what my question is, is is this replacing LeanFrog?
So I don't know that it replaces LeanFrog. That's probably not my, that's over my pay grade, as I used to like to say. But I think what it will do is it will leverage all of that work and then take us to the next level. So what, what, what we will be able to do, uh, based on what LeanFrog has done, we'll be able to do some kind of rearview mirror dashboards. But no forecasting, no kind of planning. I can't go to that work and say what's required for the, the tax plan.
Yes, ma'am, I, I just wanted to ask, I'm wondering if, if I'm understanding you correctly. So we have data, well, first of all, how are you?
I'm great, and yourself?
Uh, good, good. So we have data that's been, you know, collected or that exists in our district. LeanFrog serves as the tool or the vehicle to capture all of that data. And then from there, with what they summarize, we turned it back into our own where it has our branding on it.
Yes, but what will happen is LeanFrog has that data in the equivalent of an Excel spreadsheet.
And then you make it look like this.
And, and what will happen as a part of this is we will have a software developed specifically, specifically for this district where we house all of that data. You'll have some view of your financial data there. Um, you'll have, you know, view of kind of your regular cost data, the buildings, et cetera. So think of it as, you know, going upstairs. So you've kind of taken two steps and you still got to get up to the top of the stairwell.
I love it. I, I think really what I'm trying to make sure is that because we've already invested in LeanFrog, we're gonna, we're not redoing any of that work.
No.
We're gonna use what they've done?
Yes.
And put it into here. Okay, I just don't want us to, if that falls anywhere in this calendar, I don't want us redoing the work we've already paid.
So think of LeanFrog's work in lane two. When I said we're gonna leverage everything that we've done, it's kind of collecting the as-is. I, you know, sorry for the engineering terms, but lane two is all about as-is. How are we performing today? What do we have today? What is our portfolio today? When we get to lane four, we're gonna be talking about the to-be.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're, we're using the resources that we've already paid for?
Yes.
To get to the next stage.
And it was the right thing to do.
Awesome, thank you.
That's, that's important. It was the right thing to do.
I needed to hear that part, thank you.
If I can just tag in, and what we have also done, just to put, just to bring you behind the scenes, we have been working as a superintendent's data, data aggregation team. Myself, Ms. Pam, uh, Mrs. Okonski, uh, Amy Jones, we have been working with Byron. Weekly, we are going in and we're taking, we're having those conversations, right, to figure out what does that, what does that alignment look like? Because the truth of the matter is, is that a lot of the data that he, that he receives was really from Amy, was really from Andre's team, right? So again, the superintendent charged us to say, let's get all of the players in the room together. Let's collaborate and let's figure this out. So I wanted to give a little bit more context to it.
And the, the kinds of things you'll be able to do with this, so say for instance, and I don't know why I'm picking on Carrier, I don't even know if you have Carrier equipment. But if you find that their equipment is across the board, not performing as expected, you could then legally put a different type of warranty in their contract. Which then saves you money because you're not fixing it, you're holding them accountable for fixing it. So those are the kind of things that you can do when you have that historical information to make forward-looking decisions. Others? Mr. Gode, no questions?
I, I do want to.
Okay, okay, that's great, that's great.
I do want to interject right here for the board to know. Uh, when I started this work, a lot of the conversation was around facilities and mu- much of the conversation around facilities is around finances. We have all of this information, we have all of this data, it's in various different places. How do we put it in one place and trim the fat? We have a number of different vendors doing the same thing. And so how do we take that, trim fat so that we can ultimately say, and I don't want to say this for the record, give our employees a raise? So we have to be looking at every aspect of what we do and then think about how do we streamline, condense, consolidate, so to speak, align what we're doing so that we can make really good decisions as we go forward. So I heard the board loud and clear around a facilities master plan. But in that work, we decided, we don't want to just be a facilities master plan group for EBR school system, looking at all of the touchpoints, collecting all the data, having all the conversation with all the partners. We realized we could be that for the entire region, not just for the city, not just for the parish, but for the entire region. Because as we keep digging in around the facilities we own, around our land portfolio, we start to realize we're touching other areas of the city, we're touching other areas of the parish. And then when we get to the edges of the parish, which we learned Tuesday, we got property way up near West Feliciano, we got property way up. So we have to start thinking about how do we leverage everything we have to be a leader in the work? So again, it goes back to restoring confidence that we're educating our students, but we're also educating the city around how we need to be a better city. So I just wanted to make that, uh, interject that reference point right there.
Okay, perfect. So because of the, the line of questioning, we kind of talked a little bit about four, five, and six at the same time. The difference between four is we kind of get that, uh, what I call the initial plan. What's important to know about that plan is our goal is to give you a short-term plan, which is really priorities for one to five years. The long-term plan would then be beyond that, probably six to fifteen years. And what it would allow you to do is to kind of look at facility condition, you know, whatever parameters we decide to put in place about decision-making. And the data would then almost create those investment priorities for you.
Uh, I just wanted to jump in just for a quick second, because I know the, the thing about gee, did we do the right things with LeanFrog and was that money well-spent? Couple of things, one is, yeah, all of this is our data, but all of our people are, are, have their hands full doing their day-to-day jobs and trying to go about and collecting all of this data across all these things. You know, that's why we had to go out and get somebody outside to do that, who has expertise in doing that. But the other big thing that came out of that work is that it defined a lot of the terms. It went through and said, okay, look, we're gonna, this is what we're gonna call X, this is what we're gonna call Y. Because if you don't define the terms, any numbers you get allotted to those terms have no meaning unless you know what the terms are. So there was a lot of the background work that needed to be done. And maybe it will be tweaked as it's going forward, but I would never consider anything that was done as lost money. Uh, I think it was done extremely well and pulled together the data very well. And it more or less built a foundation so that we can take the next step. Because if you don't know where you are, any road looks as good as any other road. But it gave us the foundation to be able to start that next step going forward and in a way that was well documented and hopefully that our, our own people can be trained so that data that goes into that going forward can be kept up to date. So I think all of those things are really good aspects of what was done and really just feed into making this more productive.
Agreed. I, I think the, the big takeaway is kind of taking that first step. Um, you know, LeanFrog work gave us a data dictionary. Um, and you, you can kind of see that this work is gonna take us from individual systems or individual spreadsheets into a unified environment where we have information where we can do scenario-based decision-making. Questions? All right, there are a couple of the slides, but they just kind of go, uh, in more detail about each of the lanes, so I won't go through them, they're in your book. Um, the, the takeaway is, you know, this is gonna take some time. So you, we have an aggressive two-year plan to do this. And that plan is based on us kind of just bringing all of the existing people to the table, kind of. I will kind of be almost the leader of the orchestra saying, this is what we need from you, this is what we need from you, and kind of pulling it all together. But ultimately, we'll build a little, test a little, uh, and have checkpoints with the board along the way. So, yeah, and we haven't decided what those look like yet, because we don't want to bore you with it, but we do want to have kind of checkpoints so you understand what we've done to date, uh, what decisions we need and how we plan to move forward. Anything else?
Thank, thank you, Pam. Did you want to close out, Casey? I wanted to say this, we, we, we don't have a lot of time to waste if the board is seeking to do this expeditiously. I, I'm gonna be coming to you in a couple of weeks with a recommendation that we extend some of the work that one of our partners has already begun over a twenty-year period of time to continue this work and, and, and do the facilities master plan. Uh, their, CSRS is here, I'm gonna be making that recommendation over the next, uh, two board meetings, probably. Uh, Pam has agreed, uh, to help guide the work internally, but as you said, Mr. Gode, we need someone externally. Uh, we've done our research, uh, we've looked at facilities master planning and, and other areas of the state as well as other parts of the country. Uh, we think CSRS has done this work at a high level and we put them up against anyone in the country. So I just wanted to be transparent here and let you know where we're going. They have a ton of information about our district going back over twenty years. Uh, they've been, Pam and Casey have been working with them as well as with LeanFrog to gather all this information. If we pause now and go back out, two years turns into six years. And I don't think any of us want to waste that level of time when we can do the work right now. Casey, you wanted to add anything to that?
Just real quick, um, again, behind the curtains, myself, superintendent, a few more people sat down and said, hey, let's talk about the qualifications that we're looking for. The first qualification that the superintendent was very, was very strong with was this. He said, hey, who has the multi-dimensional strategy and expertise to be able to do this work? Architecture, engineering, instruction, uh, program, excuse me, uh, planning, program management? That was the first thing. The second thing he said is, Casey, we need to make sure that whoever we're going to kind of, whoever gets the recommendation, do they have the expertise in doing K through twelve? Uh, Assumption School District, Plaquemine School District, Coastal Louisiana, Central Louisiana. He said, Casey, let's go deeper. He said, who has the ability to be able to do complex work with larger school, with larger school districts? New Orleans Public Schools, right? The next thing, and he continued to go deeper and go deeper, narrowing his focus. The next thing he said is, is this, he said, Casey, who has the, who is, do we have a local component that has the ability to really understand who we are? CSRS been in business since nineteen seventy-eight. They have been doing business with us since nineteen, CSRS Tillage, I'm sorry, has been in business with us since nineteen, yeah, I, you know what, Mr. Tillage? You, you better believe it. You better believe it. So he said, Casey, we need to understand who can do this at this level, right? Information, this is where he said, Casey, go deeper. And the last thing he said is, Casey, we need to understand that from a data collection, database analyzation, uh, integrating digitalization, who has the ability to be able to do that kind of work? And check, 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 check. And therefore, it led to superintendent's recommendation.
And one of the biggest questions I asked, do we have to go through a lengthy process to put this out for bid? And the answer is no, because this could be an extension of the work they're already doing. So while I'm not championing an organization to do the work, I am championing us doing the work very quickly with the resources that we have. I don't care who does it, but I do care that we get it done based on the timeframe that you all have given me to get it done with the resources we already have. So we already have some internal partners who are here. If you all have any questions of them, uh, right now, uh, I think the lead person from CSRS, uh, Mr. Barfield is here. If you'd be kind enough to answer any questions, I hate to put you on the spot. But, uh, if you all have any questions, that, they're here.
So while, while he's coming up, I just want to, uh, since I have the microphone, sometimes I just take, take the liberty to say what I want to say. So I, I just want to applaud the board because str- strategy is hard. It's easy to kind of jump on the last phone call you got, the last person that complained, you know, I'mma put this fire out and get on with my day-to-day life. But committing to a futuristic view of what the district is going to be takes a lot of heart, it takes a lot of commitment. And I just applaud you all for even pushing the superintendent and the rest of us to focus on a long-term view for the district.
Mr. Barfield, before you speak, um, and Madam President, if I, if I may, I just want to tell you, Ms. Woodley, thank you for everything that you've done since you, you know, come into our district as support. And, and I remember, uh, you sharing with us that you were on contract or what have you. But I know we working you like you, like you are definitely a full part of EBR School's team. And I just want to tell you thank you because this, this was amazing, what you shared. And each time that you speak to us, you give us clarity on what we need to know, so we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay now. Okay now.
Definitely should have said that.
All right.
Loud and clear.
So good afternoon. My name is Tim Barfield and I am the president of CSRS. And I have been involved in this program for the last ten years and it's been an honor to be involved in it. Uh, Keith Tillage is our partner and Keith is here too. Judith Anderson is really our front, frontline, she is, yeah. So Judith has been a tremendous, tremendous leader for this program for us for the last five-plus years, how many, maybe? And I think what's even better, she's a product of East Baton Rouge Parish Schools. She has two kids in East Baton Rouge Parish Schools. So she does this from a, just a unique point of view and passion and everything else. She's great at what she does. So, you know, our, our view here is we're here to do what the board wants, right? Master planning is really follows after strategic planning. And it was really great to go through your strategic plan today in depth and see some of the data and KPIs behind the plan. It's been, the plan's on your website and I went through your plan. We're here to support that effort, number one. Number two, we work for you. So there's a, there's sort of some fundamentals that, uh, our architects will go through in doing facilities master planning. And that includes, you know, making sure we understand and drive some of the goals of the strategic plan. Sometimes what we do, we'll actually feed some information back into the strategic plan. And then secondly, we'll take data like what LeanFrog's doing, it's a great body of data, updated demographic studies, all those things that come in to help us not only see what's going on today to the school system today, but actually predict where people are going to be and where demand's going to be and those sorts of things. Obviously, it's a very complex school system with the charter schools and understanding our overall parish, all that needs to come in. Facilities assessments, so the last full-scale facility assessment was done in two thousand and fifteen. Judith personally led an effort to update that to some extent in two thousand and twenty-one. We called it sort of a drive-by update, but it's really a connection with a capacity study and looking at where, you know, to best use some of those, uh, resources. I think the last demographic study was done, full-scale demographic study was done in two thousand and eighteen. So our recommendation would be to update all that. And then take all that together with community engagement and involvement. And that was, uh, that was definitely laid out well by Pam and, and her process. And bring all that together, not only to get the best plan possible, but get buy-in from all your key stakeholders along the way. There'll be decision points for the board, so there's going to be key decision points that we may inform you on what the trade-offs are. We may even have recommendations. But, you know, the administration, our superintendent and the board members will have to make decisions on what route you want to go. And that can be key decisions, what comes up every year and we talk about, particularly with new school board members, is why do we have schools designed for a fifty-year lifespan? And we can certainly do schools with a, a lesser timeframe in terms of lifespan. There's a cost benefit analysis there. Sometimes there can be an impact on look and feel and student experience and those things. And you get to make the choice on how we do that. But you get to see the cost, the benefits and everything else. So our goal here is to do the best job we can of pulling all this together. We'll be very, working very closely with LeanFrog to pull in what they see and the trends and the data they have. And having gone through their scope and what they're doing and their expertise, they have done a great job and I- done a great job, and I liked seeing the presentation, and Judith's been working very closely with them and pulling in the data, but there's a lot of data, as Pam talked about, that needs to be updated to make this a really comprehensive effort. At the end of the day, we just want to deliver the best product for you that, that you can use to make your decisions, and very important decisions of where you go for the next 10 years. And as we all know, you know, we don't want that plan to sit on the shelf, but we know as soon as that plan's done, the world's changing around us. But it gives you the tools, and what I really like, that Pam was talking about, is having a tool out there that you can start using that when you do get more money, or you do, hopefully not lose money, or you do have demographic changes or changes in our economic drivers here in Louisiana, you can start using the data we have to make real-time decisions. So with that, I'll, I'll shut up unless anybody has any questions or comments.
Any questions? Thank y'all so much, sincerely appreciate it. All right. Keep up the good work. We're going, Amy Jones. You got somebody to work the board for you? Okay. So as we continue, board members, we did move, we did move one portion of it up, so we are getting closer to the end of our time together, but there are some updates and information we wanted to share with you, and these lovely young people coming up are going to do that.
Good afternoon, thanks for letting me come out from behind the work. What we want to talk about today is the roadmap that we've been on as we've transitioned from our GEMS ERP system in both the finance and the HR payroll. And so, with Ms. Kelly Lopez at the helm of our finance department, we've gone through a lot of work since you guys approved that RFP recommendation back in 2021. And as we moved forward through the, the years, getting to the launch of Go Live with the finance portion, there were a lot of factors that went into this, including staff that were instrumental in the configurations, but we also had a lot of external things that happened over those years with district leadership changes, we had school board changes, so we had a lot of things that impacted that work, but we did go live in finance. We continue to improve our financial situations by adding in a product that is adjacent to our CitySuite, and that is CorePay. CorePay is going to work on the financial enhancements to pay out our vendors, and so by adding all of our vendor work into the CorePay and working with our accounts payable and our finance department, we'll be able to get those bills paid faster. And with that model in place, that we will receive rebates on that work, so we, that will pay for the work in CorePay. Shall I give them the amount? We hope that over the course of implementing this, we will gain back into the system about $250,000 a year in our rebates.
So Amy.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you telling me that we're transitioning from like, paper checks and all that kind of stuff, and finally moving on to electronic?
That is correct.
I am so happy, look at God.
Yes, and as we, as we make that magic happen, and work on these new systems, that ACH, we're going to continue to make improvements in travel, so that we can do that electronically and make that process much easier for the district.
I am so proud of you guys. I'm so proud.
Yeah, just real quick, is CorePay and ACH, that's part of CitySuite, right?
It is.
That's not extra, okay.
CorePay is a, an additional vendor that works with CitySuite, so it is an add-on, but it is blended into, and here are a lot of the, the benefits that we see coming with CorePay, but it pays for itself.
Okay.
With those rebates. And it's, the, the implementation of CorePay is minuscule on the financial obligation side compared to the rebates that we will get with its use.
Okay. And what's the timeframe? Because we've been talking about ACH payments forever, and that should have been done two years ago, in my opinion.
Well, and a lot of that work was started two years ago, we have a lot, all of our child nutrition programs use the ACH method of payment, and we're moving that branching out into all the other vendors as well.
So child nutrition is on ACH now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, I won't read that, but it, it's magical what the benefits are for us, and we'll feel those benefits for years. On to the HR payroll side, we had lots of things that got in the way of those running in those same swim lanes like Ms. Pam talked about, mainly staffing to do the work, but the HR payroll system went through all of these changes throughout this year, and as Mr. Cole came onboard, and as Chief Smothers came onboard, we saw a lot of urgency around the matter, and we got down into the work of configuring those pages that make that work. We restructured a lot of our HR systems and put payroll and benefits in there as well. And so that work is continuing with onboarding in the, meeting all of our goals, and then, see what's, part of that is the complete work that we've done. And what I want to point out here is that our work is never complete, it is ongoing, because data changes every day. We onboard new employees, we, we have new methodologies of payment coming in. So while it is completely configured within the system, it will always be needed to be updated. The things that are in process currently, and we know some of the most high-priority tasks are those cost center allocations, how do we fund things, where do they go, what are the general ledger, ledger account numbers? All of these items are every day being implemented and configured into the system as we get closer and closer to that parallel and go-live date. We're, we're hitting a January mark on that. The next thing is to make sure all of our staff in those various departments are fully trained in how to use the new programs, and as finance can attest to, it is so much easier to use the CitySuite platform than it is the GEMS system platform. So we, we expect easy adoption into our HR payroll systems, and making sure that all of that staff are ready to go. One thing that is huge in this whole work is the salary restructuring. You've talked, talked about it much, much today, about how we make our, our salaries more equitable, but we have to get it right in the system first. So to that end, we've had some problems in the past, and we call them opportunities, but we've had some historical stipends that have been performance-based, that were inconsistently applied, some administrative discretions over the past 20 years of who got what, outdated records, are they accurate in the system? And then finally, that lack of transparency that we hear about, that we're trying to overcome with these new data dashboards and how we do things, and just being more clear about what it is we're doing and how you guys are making those decisions pushed down to us and how we put them in play. And so when we achieve those teacher, equitable teacher salaries, that's all for, also for staff, and the way that we begin that process and have been working on that process is evaluating and verifying teacher experience. So we know, as Dr. Smothers can clearly state, that in our software system, you may have someone who has 25 years of experience in EBR, but only 20 of those are in the teaching profession. So when they move into a teaching role rather than a paraprofessional role, then that moves them to a different salary schedule. There haven't been consistencies in the past that put them in the proper pay schedule. So that is one thing that her team is working very hard to clarify. And when we get to that, we develop those cohesive models, which we're working on in our salary schedule workshop, so that when we go live with this, we have a salary schedule that is easy to read by our potential employees, that when they come in and they say, what will I make as a paraprofessional with this many years of experience? What will I make as a teacher or bus operator? So those are things that we are working on the salary schedule to make it clear. And when we get to the top where we implement that in with our Go Live with CitySuite, then we have the whole package. Any questions?
I, I just want to add one thing, why, why this is so important, because it came out to me in one of the meetings, and this is zero, no, no, zero reflection on HR today, but one of the, one of the employees, one of the administrators was telling me, he says, Mike, you know, one of the biggest problems we have is that when we're interviewing a teacher, we can't tell them what they're going to make, because it, it has to go through the, I call it the black box in HR, and the Hogwarts sorting hat, and they pull out the number, and it is what it is. Now, there's a process behind it, but it's, it's opaque and variable. But, you know, that really impacts our ability to hire people, because to get the final salary that they're going to make, they got to complete an employment application and go through the whole thing like they're going to work. And I guess they might have to accept the job offer before they even get a salary, and so it just puts an impediment that is unnecessary, and it makes it overly complicated, because they're sitting there going, I have to accept a job when I don't know what the salary's going to be? I mean, you know, how would you like to do that? And so there are a lot of things in here that, that we really need to update and really improve. One thing I'm a little disappointed, I haven't heard in any of the discussions today, is employee retention. I haven't heard the retention yet word today. Are you coming? We haven't heard retention yet, and I know it's a focus now, but, you know, up until about six months ago, we had no way to even go back and look at what our employee retention rate was. And they had to cobble up a way to do it in Amy's shop, to go out and look and see, to get any idea of what our employee retention was. And as someone coming from the business side, the employee that's easiest to hire is one you already have. And so we really need to focus on retention and track it and see where we're having issues. So there's a lot of things, you know, some of this stuff, payroll is not just getting a check out the door, it's knowing what the check's supposed to be, are you paying enough to keep people, you know, all these sorts of things. And I, I think we've siloed things way too much, as if I got the check out, it was a good thing. And that is a good thing, but it's not sufficient.
Yeah.
You know, to, to be all. And so I really applaud all this, I wish we could go faster. There are some things in here, guys, I've always said this, if, if you think you need some temporary help, to bring in some temp help, to help go through records or do some things, I will be the first person to go campaign with the superintendent to try to find the money to do that, if it speeds up the process. Because these are the kinds of deficiencies that, particularly as our enrollment counts come down, these are the kind of efficiencies we're going to need, in addition to closing schools and doing these things, to, to make this district survive and thrive. I'll be quiet, Ms. Smothers, go ahead.
Oh, well, thank you for the opportunity. I must say that over the last few months, definitely upon my joining the team, of course, and the superintendent taking position, of cour-, you know, in January, we have worked intentionally to support the work. And we recognize that there has been some past practices that we've had to address, and to really dive into, to bring forth greater supports, to enhance how we look at data, how it needs to be corrected. And I think ultimately, under the leadership of Mr. Cole, we've really been in a place where we've gained access to external partners, you know, that, that collaboration has been powerful. But one of the most important things that has happened is that he's, in a way, has dismantled silos. And so with that, we have been able to work collaboratively across finance, technology, as well as human resources. We work collectively, we are consistent in the work, and we're doing it together. And I think that in itself is helping to break down much of what maybe your concerns have been, but definitely, he has championed us to do that work. We are working often, frequently, consistently, and most importantly, even in human resources, because I know that we all have, you know, have had our experiences for sure, but looking forward, here and now, and forward-moving, we are working in a space where even in HR, we're building our very own data team. So we, we are intentional about it, we've listened, we've heard, and we've sat at the table and across from our superintendent and deputy superintendent, and the work has been pushed upon us to perform and to be excellent, and of, of course, to have winning experiences.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll try to keep it simple, and I always take things and try to simplify it. With the salary piece, our guiding principle is around three words, competitiveness, the superintendent want to be competitive around not just surrounding parish, but statewide. But there's a fairness that I would equate to the retention piece. The challenge that we hear some from our veteran teachers, when you sometimes just give a flat increase, the salary schedules does what? It compresses itself. You have teachers walking in with high salaries, when you have employees who've worked hypothetically 20, 30 years, and they're making just a few dollars more than a first-year, zero-year teacher. And then another piece, last word, is sustainability. You know, as the environment change, how do we sustain what we do throughout the year? And so, we know the number-one thing around retention, especially in most entities, is the culture and how people feel supportive. But the salary piece, I think as we get deeper into it, those three things, competitiveness, fairness, and sustainability, and we'll keep people in the district.
And with that, speaking on retention, of course, our goal is to make sure that you have within the dashboard what our retention rates are, how we're supporting our employees, and most importantly, as the deputy soup has said, success is in the support. So I think our retention is built around how we well-develop our employees, and how we build a culture of belonging, as well as, as well as a culture of excellence, and, and really put them in a place where we know that we are the EBR family.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing all of that as well, Mr. Smith. My question, I think, is for both of you, Amy and, or Ms. Jones and Ms. Smothers. My question is about, I know that some neighboring districts use the TED system, I don't know if I'm using the right acronym, but it's where employees go into this desk, this system to complete that onboarding, to be able to drop in their documents. Is this what these platforms that you've mentioned will do?
Correct, yes. CitySuite has a document retention platform, but it is in partnership with our frontline work, so those are married together with application tracking, and then the fields that the, the new employee fills out as they're onboarding, just feed right into CitySuite. And the beauty of that is it goes right into CitySuite, over into payroll, so that there's just this one-stop shop.
Okay, so thank you. So, just thinking about, like, like I said, some, when some, certain teachers or public servants complete their ethics training, they would be able to drop that document right into this system?
Correct.
Okay, okay, that was my question. The other is, based on what Mr. Smith mentioned and Ms. Smothers, in thinking about teacher value, Mr. Cole, this might be a question for you now that I think about it. Have we ever thought about or looked at the opportunity of giving, I don't know if I want to say special privilege, or an opportunity for a sliding scale even, or more of a discounted rate, if, if any of our teachers want to use our early learning as their childcare for their, for their babies? Because I know that that also helps with teachers feeling supported.
Yeah, we've had, we've had numerous conversations about that, but I think there's some legal limitations around being able to do that, isn't that correct? Ms. Lopez?
Yes, sir. It's considered a gift. Hold on, I'll get it to you. Thank you, Vanna. Yes, that would be considered a gift, and we cannot give teachers things, so legally you cannot give them daycare or after-school care.
So then that means that there's some other thoughts that need to come around that?
Perhaps some we probably should explore off-camera.
Absolutely, maybe through the form of some policies, but we will talk later. Thank you. All righty, well.
All right, well, we're, we're now going to switch it over to our closing batter, Ms. Levitino, who will go through our bond initiative with our high school experience. who will go through our bond initiative with our high school experience.
Am I driving? While that's coming up, good afternoon. It's great to be the last one. So, good afternoon, President Stewart, Vice President Gode, members of the board, and Superintendent Cole. All right, so while that's coming up, I'm gonna just keep talking, so we can keep this brief. All right, so as Ms. Jones mentioned, I'm gonna go over the blueprints for better, upgrading the high school experience. So what we're focused on is that $40 million bond initiative in order to enhance our high school environments for our students and communities. I am driving. All right, great. So, I kinda gave you the purpose there, but more specifically, you have the information about the bond initiative itself. This is really more about the process that we began with schools in terms of determining which project request would be evaluated for the purpose of enhancing those school environments. So, the objectives for that process was first, we wanted to catalog the extracurricular activities and athletics that we have at each of the schools. Then we needed to assess the program's sustainability of those things before we determine which things you needed to enhance, which things you needed to add to, or what things needed to be just created in general. Evaluating the impact of each one of those things to see where we could get the most, for lack of a better term, bang for the buck. And then establishing priorities for future improvement, and then hoping that all those things together would in fact enhance that overall experience for families and students. So for step one, just to kinda keep things simple, we did break it off into three steps for our schools and school leaders to be able to work through. The first thing was just about requesting the information. As I said, we needed to catalog what activities, extracurricular, inclusive of athletics, fine arts, clubs, organizations, and then, of course, our career and technical education fields. What did we have at each campus? So the school leaders were asked to complete a standardized survey. You see an image of one of them up top in those four areas. What we asked them to do was to give us an unduplicated number of students participating in each of those things. Now, the duplication does come in, in the fact that you may have a student who shows up in the athletic area and the fine arts area, but independently, we did get those numbers for each of the categories, to have this information. So, on average, our high school campuses of the groups that we surveyed, about 24% of those students participate in athletics, so that's like 1 in 4 students are, is an actual rostered? Yes, ma'am. It's probably... Sorry. We swapped the order a little bit, so I think, okay. All right, so 1 in 4 students participates or is a rostered athlete on a campus. But then we have about 29.1 or 30% of our kids that are artisans, so that means that that's inclusive of band and our dancers. So essentially, when we're talking about Friday Night Lights, I will put those two groups together, because essentially, your athletes and your field show components are together in those areas. Then about 38% are in a high school club or organization, that's inclusive of student-created organizations too. And then we have about 49.6 or about 50% of our kids that are participating in some form of workforce. We did include that one in, noting the fact that we do have some other facilities for those students to be able to participate on outside of their campus environment. Oh, there it is. All right, so once we got that information, the schools then received a school-specific form sent back to them with the information that they gave us with those percentages that you just saw per school. And then the request to add in, all right, based on these four areas, what are some things that would enhance each of those areas? They were also asked to, when they turned those things in for the areas, to keep this piece in mind. So, we asked them to list what they would think would be a project that would benefit their school environment in those areas, but then we were also asking them to then evaluate the priority level for those things. Because of course, everything that they submit is going to be important. They're all important. But if you're gonna prioritize which things you need done first, we asked them to use this rubric in these five areas, and they are resource and facilities overview. So and essentially, if you're a school leader, you're going through that list and you're turning in the information that you'd want. That first area is really just, is this a new creation? Is this something you already have? Do you, do we just need to enhance, do a quick repair, or is this an entirely new thing? So that's your resource and facilities overview component. Then you have student impact. Are you asking for something that's gonna impact, as we said, on average, 1 in 4 students participates in a sport? But we also know there are students that participate just coming to cheer those groups on. There's also some schools, and that's the average for all of the high schools, but there are some schools who have about 4 out of 10 kids who are participating in a rostered sport. So what impact would that have on your student body? The next piece was sustainability risk or fiscal dependency. If this is something that we're gonna take on as a project, is it something we're gonna have to revisit next year or the year after that? Is it going to sustain further? And will that be able to let them be able to operate independently? The last, or the fourth piece is the transformative impact for the school community. So is that going to be something that is beneficial for your school community inside of your school area? Then giving the fifth one, your broader community impact. Like how is that gonna enhance your neighborhood area? We did have some schools that requested some things that they would like for their neighborhood areas to be able to use as well, because it's outside of the school building itself. So, moving on. I think I pressed the button too many times, sorry. All right, so criteria for project selections, because as we said, if you give a mouse a cookie, you know the rest. So if you ask a school leader or a school what it is they want, you're gonna get a very extensive list. So that being the case, we had to put some criteria onto those selections, because we know that everything, the very first thing actually we looked at is the fifth one on this list, is is it a bond-eligible expense? So in some aspects, there are some pieces that you're just asking for something that can be purchased through another funding source, or it's something small that's not gonna sustain or on average beyond that 20-year piece, then that's not necessarily what we would be looking for for this initiative, not saying that it's not important. Also, site capacity, are you asking for something that there is a space on your campus that you can actually have? Are you asking, does the student enrollment support that ask? Is it of high priority or something that's gonna impact you? Then we looked at where that school may be listed in this tax plan or previous tax plans, is there other funding sources that can be used for that? The thing that's not listed up here, that was kind of an understood point as well, and I believe Mr. Gilbert might have been the one that mentioned it before, we have a lot of older facilities, we have a good percentage, that's a better thing, of older facilities on the campus. So there were things that were built up back in like the 80s and the 70s. And so those ADA requirements may have been different at that time. So if a school leader asks for something that would also benefit us by repairing that and addressing that ADA compliance issue, we also wanted to take that into consideration. Okay, there it is. All right, so I'm sure you are all dashboarded out, but dashboard is created for the purpose of us being able to drill into data to make informed decisions. So all of the school leaders' asks were populated into a dashboard to be able to kinda drill down to what we're looking at. So you have, I believe, that in your binders, but this was just for us to be able to see where a lot of those asks were coming from, what the costs were looking like. So I do wanna take a moment to pivot or to give a disclaimer. When we're talking about those cost estimates that you see up there, those are generic estimates, not based on any contractor having gone into the school sites, because we know if somebody's asking for, I'll give an example, if I need my baseball field to be redone, it depends on what state your baseball field is in. So we can get an estimate in terms of how much materials, installation costs are in this area, but specifically for that school site, that would require one of our contracted construction partners to come in and look at that and make sure that that is an adequate amount. But for our purposes, our focus is on the project request itself, and then we can look at those estimates.
May I interject this at this point? Board members, if you would, turn into your binder, the last document behind the yellow tab, behind tab 6, the last document. What you will see there are all of the requests. You'll see the requests, and you will see the estimated, total estimated amount that Ms. Levitino is referring to on the board. But you see the requests for all 14 of our high schools have been included, taking into consideration the criteria we use to arrive at these numbers. We are going to do some more work, working with some of our partners, primarily Judith Anderson, to determine if these estimated costs are accurate. And one of the things I wanna say for the general public to understand, you know, some of our schools are included in the tax plan, so there are other funding sources for much of what they're requesting. So these numbers are based on the request, based on the criteria, and based on the team looking at what's available, these are the numbers and these are the projects for all 14 of our high schools that they have requested. So I don't want this to get in the paper or on social media, and somebody say Arlington's getting this, or Bel Air's getting this. This is what they've requested based on the conversation they've had with their school communities, and then here's what we're bringing forth to you based on the amount of money we have to do the projects across all 14 of our high schools, primarily looking at bond eligibility, ADA compliance, facilities, enrollment, and then how are these projects going to enhance the overall high school experience? Because ultimately, what we wanna see happen at each of our high schools is their ability to recruit, right, to recruit more students to what is happening at their schools, which ultimately is gonna be enhance our ability to recruit students to our school system.
Are they listed in order of what they want, or they're just randomly on the page? Like I'm looking at the sheet, is the top one on each sheet like there, if we only get one thing, that's what we want?
Oh, no, it's not by priority. This is, this is...
Sporadic.
This is, so what we brought to you is, if in fact these numbers hold, this potentially is gonna be the recommendation for all of the things on it.
For the whole, for the school, okay.
Yeah, because everything that you see on the page is a 36 million, so it brings us under. And, you know, give or take a few. All right, unless Mr. Barfield wants to give us another 40 million, this is what we're gonna be right here.
Okay, I think Mr. Cole covered that, yes, these in fact are requests. And so, moving on to the next piece of this, next steps. Of course, we have a large team here at EBR, so we would need to determine a sequence of project completion, once this list is in fact approved as the project list moving forward. So in terms of trying to determine what order we would move forward with completing these projects, we wanna consider the minimal impact in the instructional environment, because again, a lot of these requests you'll see are in the surrounding areas of the campuses. There are a few folks that have asked for and needed to ask for some auditorium repairs because it dealt with some other things. But we wanna kinda get to those things that may not cause us to have to move large groups of students, particularly if we have like gym, things like that, we have physical education that happens in the gym, things to consider. Seasonally impacted requests, if you are requesting a soccer field, probably not a great idea to work on it during soccer season, those things of that nature. And then long-term requests, there are some very larger projects, larger projects on that list. So our next steps would then be to establish a timeline and then tiering those school projects once they are approved, create those bids to get moving forward, and then measure the impact with quarterly surveys. Because as Mr. Cole mentioned earlier, the whole purpose of this is to enhance our school environments and to make them more competitive and more appealing to our students and those in our surrounding community that may decide to return to our school system. And with that, thank you.
Good job, Ms. Levitino, good job. So I wanna make, I wanna make sure the board is aware of the next steps in this process. We plan to bring to you the recommendations in January, so that we can begin the work in February. And we're going to prioritize the work based on the low-hanging fruit. What are those things that create the least amount of disruption on campus? And then the projects in terms of the timeline, and also what we recognize, some of these projects are probably gonna go out for bid just based on the scope of work, and we have to take all of that into consideration as well.
I just wanna apologize to Ms. Jackson, because I was telling Superintendent Cole to speed up the process a little bit. I did not realize that they had moved your section forward, so I thought we were falling way behind schedule. So if you'd like, I'd be happy to stay after and watch the rest of your presentation. If you'd like to hear, I'm sorry. I will stay and, I will stay and watch.
Well, with that, let's give yourselves a hand. If you got here at 10 o'clock this morning and you're still here on probably the prettiest Saturday of the year, hats off. My mother, who was a 30-year educator in the EBR school system, would be proud of each of you. So just to kinda give you a 30-second recap of what I talked about when we started. Communications is a core competency that, when properly executed, connects every member of a team to a common set of strategies, goals, and actions. Unless these components are effectively shared by project leads, school board members, executives of the East Bedouin Parish School System, project outcomes are jeopardized, and budgets and proposed plans incur unnecessary risk. Steps to success to more effective communications, always remind yourself, what is the goal of what I'm talking about? Who needs to hear this? And how should I pass this message across? Just kinda remind yourself of that if you're at a school board meeting, if you're at a workshop, a seminar, or at a school's meeting. And continue to build your communication skills. Be clear at all times, remain courteous, and remain open-minded. I close with asking board members a few questions. Mr. Blue said, "Let's make the fourth year of our term the best year ever." Hats off to that statement. Mr. Gode said, "No personal attacks." Hats off to that statement. Mr. Lewis said, "Let's reduce silos." Hats off to that statement. And someone said, "Let's challenge ourselves to build more interpersonal relationships." Is that you, Mr. Blue? Mr. Blue said that. Guys, this has been a great day before I turn it over to the superintendent. Keep up the great work, keep pushing forward, keep leaning forward. There's a lot of kids, parents, and constituents counting on you. Hats off to the work that you do. And I'll give it to the superintendent for the final word.
Let's give Mr. Franklin a round of applause for facilitating the day. Sincerely appreciate you. I wanna thank all of our staff for being here with us. As you can see, we're gonna get out of here early. I wanna thank our partners for being here who help us with this work. One of the things I wanted to do is just kinda bring everything together for what the day was about. We have done a tremendous amount of work together during the first year. I could talk about the big things, realignment, talk about our transportation, our early learning centers, talk about all of the work we've done with our employees, professional development, how we've deployed our human capital back into schools to ensure that we're providing the right types of support at our schools. We had a great first year. Now we have to go a step further. So today's work was really about doing two things. One, identifying roles and responsibilities. The board has given us a charge, you all have given us a charge, around a strategic plan, student achievement, operational excellence, and employee development. And everything we do is gonna fall under one of those pillars. But then the work actually has to happen every single day. And we wanted you to see what our roadmap looks like to accomplish our goals, so that when you are out in the community and people are asking you about daring to be great, you understand everything we do is leading towards ultimately having an impact on student achievement. And how do we have an impact on student achievement? By creating excellent operational systems, as well as creating really awesome environments, but supporting our staff in a way that they can do this work at a high level. So that's what today is really about. And then we have to think about the future. What are we trying to accomplish in the future? We're trying to create a world-class school system that everyone, whether your students or your children attend our schools or not, we can be proud of. Baton Rouge, Louisiana is probably one of the largest manufacturing cities in the world. Anywhere you go in the world, someone is benefiting from products that are created and produced right here in Baton Rouge. And in all of our industries, the vast majority of the employees who work in any of those industries are born and educated right here in our school system. That's not a story we tell enough. So everything we do in our school system touches the world. The information, the education our students are getting or receiving in our school system touches the world. And how do we do that in a way that people can be proud of and that reeks of excellence? How do we do that? So that's what this was about today. And so, I want the board to be confident and knowing, we're pushing, we're busting up silos, we're challenging people, we're pushing individuals, we're pulling individuals, we are promoting individuals to being customers when they cannot get in line with the work we are trying to do within our school system. Y'all gonna catch that on the way home. So the reality of the situation is, board members, you're gonna get calls from people. You're gonna get calls from people in our school... You're going to get calls from people in our school system who are not pleased with what we're asking them to do. But we cannot want to be better if we're not willing to do better. And we cannot want to see something different if we're not willing to do different. And we're asking our school leaders, we're asking our teachers to do a lot of things differently. And what you can see, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed based on some preliminary numbers I got last night, Andrea, that the results are going to be in the overall outcome of our student performance this year. And I'm really excited, but those are preliminary numbers, so I'm going to keep my mouth closed. But I'm really excited about what's to come. And also, I want you to know, we have some really good people, as you saw today. Some of whom didn't get an opportunity to come up and talk, so we'll put them in front of you after everyone leaves. Mr. Gode, we'll let them come up one by one. But we have a really good team. And the team is only as good as the leader allows them to be. Not as good as I am, but as good as I allow them to be. Because all of them are better experts in various different areas than I am, and I have to be willing to allow them to do this work, particularly when you've given us the charge. So with that being said, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for allowing us to be with you today. We'll try to schedule another retreat about a year from now where we can talk about all of our accomplishments. A year ago, had you told me we would have accomplished all this by this time this year, I would have said probably not. But now I'm more motivated and excited than ever that we can do even more. So we have a plan to do even more, and I think people are starting to take notice. I think the seven-page article Charles is going to write about what we did today is going to be all positive. And so I want to thank all of you. I want to thank you for making time to get here, all of you for making time to be with us today. So thank you very much. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask, let me see who I want to ask today. I'm going to ask Mr. James Crochet to come out and close us with a prayer. Mr. Crochet.
I like being put on the spot. Everybody bow your head, please. We just want to thank the good Lord for all the wisdom he has bestowed upon everyone in this room today and ask everyone to have safe travels on their way home. Amen.
Mr. Crochet understands. Be brief. Thank y'all very much. Thank you very much.